All right. Good evening. We're still waiting on one councillor, but the time having just gone 5:30, we do need to begin and we do have a quorum. So, good evening. My name is Paula Reet, Mayor of Kingborough, and it is my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting on Monday, the 21st of July 2025. Warm welcome to everyone who is in the public gallery this evening. The time being now just past 5:30pm, I officially declare this meeting open. Council now operates under the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations of 2025. Under these, I am required to advise you that a) an audio or audiovisual recording is being made of the meeting, and b) all persons attending the meeting are to be respectful of and consider it towards other persons attending the meeting, and c) language and conduct at the meeting that could be perceived as offensive, defamatory, or threatening to a person attending the meeting or listening to the recording is not acceptable. The audio recording of council meetings is made publicly available on our website and meetings are livestreamed on YouTube. I now ask the acting CEO to confirm that the audio recording has started.
Confirmed, Mayor.
Thank you. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, pay my respects to elders past and present, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. Our attendees this evening are myself, councillor Reet, councillor Antoli, councillor Bain, councillor Dean, councillor Fox, councillor Richardson, and councillor Street. From our staff this evening, we have the acting CEO, Mr Smee, the Director of People and Finance, Mr Spinks, the Director of Engineering Services, Mr Mackey, Director of Environment, Development and Community Services, Ms Shakuti, Manager Development Services, Ms Tyler Moore, our Senior Strategic Planner, Mr Standar, our Communications Lead, Ms Adams, our Executive Assistant, Mrs Morton, and our Senior Customer Service Officer, Ms Jones. We have apologies this evening from the Deputy Mayor, councillor Gladwrit, and councillor Midgley. Councillor Cordova has advised me he is about five minutes away. We're now on page one, confirmation of minutes, that the minutes of the open session of council meeting number 11, held on the 7th of July 2025, be confirmed as a true record. Looking for a mover and a seconder, please? I've got a mover in councillor Fox and a seconder in councillor Dean. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Motion is carried. Workshops held since the last council meeting, there was a workshop held on the 14th of July in relation to the local provisions' schedule. We are now on page two, declarations of interest. Does any councillor have an interest they would like to declare? No? Thank you, and welcome to councillor Cordova. Transfer of agenda items, is there any item on the agenda that a councillor would like to transfer from open into closed session or closed into open session? No? Thank you. Before we go to questions without notice from the public, our meeting procedures that are printed in the agenda on page six currently do not allow for questions to be asked in relation to items that are on tonight's agenda. However, I believe it is likely that, given the topic of the LPS tonight, that we do have some members of the community who would like to take the opportunity to ask questions at this point in the meeting. So, we will need to move a motion to allow this, and I believe that councillor Bain has one ready.
Thank you, Mayor, and I believe the Gzeck Assistant has it already put up on the screen.
So, the motion is that council set aside its standard meeting guidelines in relation to the restriction of public questions on items listed on the agenda to allow for questions in relation to the Kingborough draft local provisions' schedule. This decision is to apply to this meeting only, and all other provisions of the meeting guidelines shall apply. So, it's moved by councillor Bain, and do I have a seconder? Councillor Fox. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? The motion is carried. Thank you very much. If I can just, to those people who are in attendance this evening, if you do wish to ask a question, it's a maximum of three questions allowed per person per meeting. Your questions should be short and clear, not to be a statement, have little or no introduction, and there is to be no discussion or debate about the questions or the answers. Having said that, we do invite you to, if you would like to ask a question, if you can come to the microphone that is set up over there, start by stating your name and the suburb in which you live before providing us with your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Julian Bush, Bruny Island. I refer to part 16 of the Boundary Fencing Act 1906. When a fence is to be erected on land covered with standing bush or scrub etc., it says it shall clear the bush and scrub and remove fallen timber for a width of not less than two metres each side, and shall fell and remove any trees standing etc. Given Kingborough's, Kingborough Council's tree felling policy etc., about having to make application to fell trees, that one needs to apply and to remove trees etc., I assume a DA comes under Looper. Which legislation has precedence, Looper or the Boundary Fencing Act?
Ms Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. Neither have precedence over the other. They both are relevant, and one doesn't overrule the other, so they need to apply if it is relevant.
Under what legislation can you, if you need to apply, if you shall remove? It states 'shall'.
Ms Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. I don't have an answer with respect to the 'shall'. We could take that on notice, but we do have legal advice to say that one act does not take precedence over the other. So, if you are approved or have an exemption under one, it doesn't automatically give you an exemption under any other act that is applicable.
But one, sorry, to continue, Mayor.
That's your third question.
One appears to be breaking the law if you do not remove, if you wish to make offence.
Ms Talamore.
We'll take the question on notice.
Okay. Will council then follow this up, the LGAT, to forward to whatever government we may or may not have in the future? It might be a good idea.
Thank you. We will provide an answer on notice for that. Thank you. Is there anybody else here this evening who would like to ask a question? Please don't be shy. For those who have just come in, there are some more chairs you can unstack there so that you can find a spot to put them. Feel free to take them over there. We wouldn't want you to be standing for the duration of the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. So, my name is Mr Carl Savageary. I'll spud up for you afterwards if you need. I'm from Margate. So, my question is related to the report, the 35F report, and in particular the landscape conservation zone, which my property is proposed to be under. and in particular the landscape conservation zone, which my property is proposed to be under. In the report, the words and the term landscape values are referred to 111 times. I'm yet to see in any documentation a definition of what landscape values actually are. So, I'd like to know how has council assessed landscape values, using what methodology, and who has undertaken this assessment?
Mr Standar. Oh, it's not on.
There we go. Thank you. Through you, Mayor, the LPS supporting document actually provides a bit of a overview of the commissions, actually, their methodology in applying the landscape conservation zone. That methodology is a spin-off from the Yoon Valley LPS. So, if you have a look at the LPS supporting document that's on council's website, it elaborates on what those values are in detail.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I have indeed. I have reviewed that document in detail, and there is also the methodology which Kingborough Council was signatory in developing, the scenic values assessment guidelines. The council's submission does not contain those details or the mapping required underneath those landscape values. So, as part of that process, it is also required to develop the character statement for the landscape that's to be developed. I'd also like to know how has the council assessed what character we're trying to preserve? How has that been assessed, and what community engagement has been involved in the assessment of that character?
Mr Standar.
Through you, Mayor. Well, council, in terms of the methodology, to be simply put, we've used the LPS guidelines. So, the LPS guidelines provide the provisions, how the zoning translations should be undertaken, and there's a section within the guidelines that specifically deals with the landscape conservation zone. I guess what we did provide in the report on the representations is that there are some inconsistencies between the requirements for the landscape conservation zone and the rural living zone. So, if you look at both guidelines, it almost contradicts itself, and that's partly the reason why in this representation report that's in front of council tonight, council's also proposing an alternative to that. So, the intent is really to address the concerns from the community. I guess to go back to your question, the landscape conservation zone, council didn't undertake analysis as such in terms of the landscape values. We purely used the landscape guidelines or the LPS guidelines to determine where the zoning should apply. It's got a set of criteria in there. And then also what we've utilized during this process is to use the representations that we received on the landscape conservation zone and to focus on those areas, and that's most probably where we also proposed alternative to the landscape conservation zone. I guess the only thing that I would add, and I want to keep it short, is that we're happy to discuss those issues at the hearings. That's the intent of the hearings, and we've been quite consistent in this report that we understand that people might have different views on that, and it is something we would like to discuss with the community at the hearings.
Thank you. Did you have a third question?
I've got many questions. I'm just trying to think which from that response I'd like to put for my third question. So, I have put a question to council with notice at a previous meeting and following on on your comment there. So, the assessment hasn't been done. The council have said that they didn't have the resources to undertake the assessment. In the response to council, they say they will undertake an assessment potentially at a future date. Whilst I would love to understand what that looks like at a future date, I fail to see how the council can assign a landscape value when they haven't done the assessment. So, how does the council see the application of that in the future?
Ms Talamore.
Through you, Mayor, there seems to be, and we've seen this in a number of forms, a confusion between the LCZ and the Scenic Protection Code.
No, there's no misunderstanding.
Sorry, sorry. We're not debating that this is question time. We will be here for a very long night otherwise.
The Scenic Protection Code, which is one of the overlay codes that applies, that a lot of people raised, is something that we don't have the ability, got transitioned by the minister to put that through, and it didn't directly relate to the LCZ. So, the comments that we've made previously in the council meetings and in reports and in responses to questions at council meetings about us doing it later because we don't have the resource to do it now is correct. So, after the LPS is done, then we would like to do that because we also agree that the application of the Scenic Protection Code doesn't make very good sense. Now, that was provided to us as part of KIPS, and we agree that it does need some modification and review. But because the minister said it's been transitioned, end of story for us at this point in time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to ask any questions? Please come forward.
Hi, sorry for the voice. I've got a bit of a croaky voice.
That's all right. There's a few coughs. You'll have to bear with us. So, yeah, please go ahead.
Rob Cooper from Blackmans Bay. For years, Kingborough Council have planned and advised the public what the landscape conservation zone was. In early 2023, they held landscape conservation information sessions. Many people received advice from council on that zoning for their property, trusted it, and didn't submit a representation. Now that a new zone has been proposed that has in some aspects of it a more, it's more restrictive than landscape conservation, will there be the opportunity for representations from people who didn't put them in because of the additional restrictions that are being in place?
Ms Talamore.
Through you, Mayor, I understand from the question, is it suggested, if I could just get clarity, that the more restriction is relating to the comments in the 35G report? Yeah. So, just for the audience, I think it's really important to understand about a 35G and the 35F. So, the 35F report is the summary of all the representations, and which we are required under the Act to provide to the TPC. As part of that report, we can choose to put in recommendations, whether that's long, short, detailed overview, it's not specific. You've obviously seen the report, and I'm sure you've read parts of the report. The 35F doesn't relate to anything in the state planning provisions, and that is because under the 35G report, that's about the state planning provisions. So, the 35G is where members of the public may have raised things and said, oh, the height's not right in the industrial zone, or we should be able to have a site coverage in the commercial zone. So, they're parts of the scheme. Under the LPS, we don't have the power to adjust. So, the comments in the 35G that relate to the LCZ, which we would disagree are more restrictive, it's just applying in a different way, won't be considered at the public hearings. It'll be considered later because what it's saying is you can write your comments about the SPPs, the state planning provisions, and then you could send them to the minister. Now, it's really unclear about what they're actually going to do after that, but in theory, you would think the minister would take any comments about the state planning provisions, which we can't ordinarily change as a council, and they're going to have a whole process to talk about them. So, the comments that are in the 35G in tonight's report will have no bearing on the LPS outcome.
Okay. Clarifying that, answering yes or no, on the basis that there's a proposal for a new zone to be applied, are you going to open up for new representations to come in from people who didn't put it in representation because they were not aware that this entirely new zone was going to be created or proposed to be created?
Ms Talamore.
Through you, Mayor, the proposal of the PPZ.
I did say answering yes or no.
Sorry, I'll chair the meeting.
Oh, sorry. I'm just clarifying what my question was in case she didn't hear that I asked for it, yes or no.
Well, it's difficult to answer.
Preamble.
Yeah, difficult to answer yes or no. So, the PPZ, which is a response to the representations that has been written and drafted, will be considered by the Tasmanian Planning Commission. It is up to them to make the decision on the steps of further consultation. So, it's up to them to decide how they deal with that. So, the planning schemes that have already gone through the system, some of them they just wrote to the affected people. But they also have the power to say, no, we're going to put the whole lot back on exhibition, or they may choose to do just parts of it, like perhaps maybe anyone who's LCZ and rural living, because it's not just about LCZ, there's a whole lot of zones included. So, it'll be up to them, but certainly people will be able to talk to it if they have a representation in, and I understand the comment, but what if I didn't put a representation in before? Then they need to approach the TPC to be asked to be joined as a party.
Okay, thank you. My third question, regarding the scenic overlay and the transitioning that occurred, and the minister approved that transition. Who requested for that transitioning to be approved by the minister?
Ms Talamore.
I believe, from my recollection through you, Mayor, sorry, that we were just directed by the TPC that that was one of the transitioning because they transitioned some of the other codes as well.
Mr Standar, do you want to add to that?
From memory through your mayor, it was a declaration that came through the commission. So, I'm not quite sure how much conversation with council occurred before that, but it was through a direction from the commission in the early stages of the LPS.
Just like every other council?
Excuse me?
Just like every other council?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to ask some questions?
Charles Biggins, Lesley Vale. Questions about council procedure. Tonight's agenda item 12 is listed in open session, as open council session, not council acting as the planning authority?
No, it will be council acting as the planning authority.
Given that council delegated all of the planning authority in its February 2024 delegation, or all of the planning authority for the submission, everything to do with the LPS nominations, the 35 reports, to the staff via the general manager, how is item 12, council officers reporting to the planning authority? Essentially, are we not looking at the delegated planning authority reporting to council acting as the planning authority?
I'm not sure. I understand your question, but I'm hoping that...
You've delegated the authority for this procedure to council staff. So, is not item 12 misleading, and it's saying council officer report to the planning authority?
Ms Talamore.
Through you, Mayor, that is correct. There are delegations that this report could just be sent to the TPC via the Manager Development Services or the Chief Executive Officer or the applicable director. Given the nature of the report and importance to the community, we thought it was appropriate that it be in the chamber, and we do have the flexibility to be able to not exercise the delegation at that point, but bring it to the chamber. The recommendation in the report is that it be noted, so it's not a particular passing of a decision, that it be noted, and then forwarded to the Tasmanian Planning Commission.
Yes, okay. So, it's only being noted tonight? There's no vote on it by the planning authority? You had a meeting, you had a workshop meeting on this very topic. So, you had a meeting between the delegated planning authority and councillors acting as the planning authority in a closed workshop? Is this just theatre that we're going to have tonight?
Thank you for the question. We often have workshops. You don't need to make them sound sinister by saying they're closed. That's just a fact of workshops amongst all councils. So, you know, that's not an appropriate comment. It is not uncommon for us to workshop any range of issues, and that allows an in-depth understanding to be provided to councillors ahead of an agenda coming out and the pre-reading that we do before meetings, before the discussion that takes place on the floor of this place. So, there is nothing sinister about it. There is, you know, you can make those allegations about theatre, but everyone who sits here as a councillor and as a planning authority member when we sit as that, take our responsibilities very seriously in terms of considering the materials before us, and indeed, the local government act ensures that that when we do sit as a planning authority, we do so with an open mind in terms of every issue that comes before us.
So, am I correct in thinking that in tonight's meeting, where the 35F and G reports prepared by council officers with delegated planning authority to the councillors acting as the planning authority will not, do not have any power of veto this evening?
They will be debated by councillors when we sit as a planning authority.
But it's only to be noted, there's, council officers are presenting the report, and it's being noted.
I don't want to get into debating this with you, Mr Biggins, but to be clear, the recommendation is to note it. We will have a robust discussion when we sit as a planning authority, and if there is a will of any members of the authority to make any alterations, then we will deal with that on the floor of this chamber at that time. But the paper is coming to us as noting, and we will proceed on that basis.
Thank you very much.
It does not circumvent any debate around it, just to be clear. Thank you. Are there any further questions from members of the community? No, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, beg your pardon.
My name is Erica Roberts. I'm in owned property in Kettering.
Sorry, I can't hear you. If you could just bring that microphone down a little bit, that would be appreciated because we also have to record it and make sure it's being heard on the livestream and the recording. If you just bring it up to your sort of level with your mouth. Thank you very much.
My name is Erica Roberts, and...
And your suburb?
Kettering.
Kettering, thank you.
I'd like to pick up a little bit on the first question, which related to the fencing and boundaries.
Sorry, I'm struggling to hear you. If you could just try and stay with the microphone, that would be appreciated.
My name is Erica Roberts. I'm from Kettering. I'm picking up on the first question, which related to consistency with the provisions of the planning legislation and provisions with the Fencing and Boundary Act. At that time, the question pointed out that, according to the Fencing and Boundary Act, residents shall remove, will remove vegetation around their fencing. However, it's been made very clear to me that the council does not necessarily allow such removal, and indeed, will fine such people who do remove it. So, I was surprised to hear the answer to the question was that there is no conflict, or it's going to be checked. Now, I'd like to also draw your attention to the fact that under the Forest Protection Act, there are exemptions that allow or permit responsible persons to remove potentially dangerous large native eucalypts from areas around their infrastructure. And again, I have noted, and I know quite positively, that... that council will not approve, that in fact will fine people if they take advantage of those exemptions under the Forest Practices Act and remove dangerous material. Furthermore, I would like to point out that under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, all responsible persons have a responsibility, a duty of care to remove hazardous or potentially hazardous material from their property to the maximum extent reasonably practical. Again, I'm very well aware, and I'm sorry that council is not admitting to it, well aware that council will not allow that.
Sorry, could I?
And in fact.
Could I ask you please to put your question, Ms. Roberts?
Yes, the question is the same as the one asked earlier. This conflict, how is this conflict going to be resolved? Is it going to be resolved in favour of the provisions of the Occupational Health and Safety Act? And the Fencing and Boundaries Act and the TPA exemptions? Or is council going to create a new prohibition and force us to increase and develop the fire fuel load on our properties and endanger ourselves, our assets and our industries?
Thank you. Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor, I just want to clarify that I didn't make the comment that there was no conflict. There can be conflict between the legislation and that's a very frustrating part of being regulators. We regulate a number of acts, Boundary Fences Act, we only partially touch on, on from the Development Services. It's not directly something in our area, but we are familiar with it, much as we are familiar with some of the other acts as well. So the fact that one doesn't overall the other does make it difficult. There, with respect to planning, which is what I think perhaps is being referred to, there are a number of exemptions in the planning scheme about vegetation removal and if there's approved fire plans. There's other exemptions as well with respect to boundary fencing. So it's quite a complicated matter to give the response. We could take it on notice. So the overall question is really about vegetation management from private land, as I understand what the question is. And it does bring in quite a few different acts and we can do our best to do that. But conflicting acts is something that we can't resolve. It's a national problem. And they serve different purposes and some aren't relevant in urban environments.
Thank you. So we will provide some further information with, in taking that question on notice.
I'm sorry?
We will provide some further information, as we indicated earlier to the question from Mr. Bush. We will provide some further information in writing to that question.
Right. The next question is, what responsibilities does council take for fining people for clearing vegetation that they are supposed to have a duty of care to clear? I would have thought that that's a, a serious breach of, of forcing people to, or fining people for obeying one law and not providing the council requirement to protect native flora and fauna that invade their property.
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. There's a couple of different legislations again that about this. I believe that Ms. Roberts is referring to possibly abatement notices. Abatement notices are issued for properties that can include hazardous materials or overgrown vegetation in particular environments. And whilst that's not, that's not my department, that's not my team, I don't deal with that. There'd be other offices that maybe I'd answer that better. But it needs to consider the other requirements. And as I mentioned before, if it's with respect to planning and the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993, there are exemptions related to particular directions given by certain authorities that are applicable. So it needs to be considered on a case by case basis.
Thank you. Did you have a further question? You have one remaining.
I do. It has to do with simplicity and transparency. I note that there is a great deal of material to read through, twisted and winding all over the place. I think it's some 400 pages that council are asked to review and recommend in these, backing up these recommendations, which would suggest that the new planning scheme or the provisions of the council, of the planning requirements are going to be even more complicated and obtuse and inimical to the safety, wellbeing and of ratepayers, their assets and industry. That is of considerable concern to me that it's, these new provisions will deny people their property rights to remove invasive species that are potentially destructive and threatening to the health, safety and industry assets and industry of ratepayers.
Ms. Talamore.
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear what the actual question was.
Well, you seem to be, am I correct in saying that you are more concerned to protect the and increase the population, support the native vegetation and wildlife than to protect the community, its assets and industry in your planning and zoning schemes?
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor, very broad question. The state government has plans and proposals for the future development of Tasmania. It's done through a number of policy documents, such as the Southern Regional Land Use Strategy that directs where we should have further growth. The state government wrote the planning scheme, the zones and the codes. Our, our role in that is applying where those zones and codes are in the right places. So I'm not, I'm not sure if I've quite understood the question, but is it, do we want more population? The state government's policies do suggest that there should be more population and more housing and development. And it's not just about housing, it's about commercial uses too, to make this a sustainable state. And with that, we also need to have regard to the important elements of the state, which includes vegetation and heritage, and also be mindful and protect our community from hazards such as bushfire, coastal erosion and flooding as an example of some of those. So it's a balancing act between a whole lot of different ranges for different objectives to make Tasmania an appropriately suitable place for further development and growth.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't understand that answer.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else with further questions? If you come forward, please.
Frances, Frances Bender, Tinderbox. The PPS is apparently being applied to parcels of land with different spatial qualities than those parcels in the landscape conservation or rural living zone. However, they are being applied to parcels generally less than 10 hectares, some without any substantial vegetation values and lots that in other municipalities would be zoned rural living with appropriate overlays. While the proposed PPZ has a different name, it has very similar requirements to the landscape conservation zone. And in some instances, they're more onerous. How is this going to result in a better outcome for landowners who have concerns regarding the overreach of the landscape conservation zone?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, Mayor. First of all, I think the way I want to approach answers, yes, you're correct. The, what we've tried to do with this report is to look at the areas where council's initial proposal for the landscape conservation zone attracted a lot of representations. So Tinderbox Peninsula is one of those areas where we got a lot of representations, where people felt uncomfortable with the landscape conservation zone. I guess what we've tried to do is to have a look at the current zoning under the Kimber interim planning scheme, which is for the majority of the Tinderbox area is the environmental living zone. And we tried to provide a bit of a comparison in the report. And it's on, if you want to have a look at that, it's on page 67, I think, onwards. It talks about the landscape conservation zone and the challenges that we have in the zoning translation. So in that document, there is a comparison between the environmental living zone, the rural living zone, the landscape conservation zone, and then finally the proposed new zone. So when we looked at that, really what we tried to do was to focus on the concerns that people had about the landscape conservation zone and to, to utilise, I guess, that feedback to provide a little bit more flexibility in the proposed new zone. So I, I most probably have to ask you a question because I don't understand how the new zone would be more restrictive because it's intentionally written to be more flexible than the environmental living zone and the landscape conservation zone. So it's a direct response to the concerns about the landscape conservation zone. I guess what we're saying in the report is we're putting it up as an option. It's not the only option. There's more options most probably, but we need to discuss it with people at the hearings. So what you'll pick up in the report and is most probably relevant to all the other zones, the message is quite clear. This is our preliminary suggestions to the commission, but we're open to discuss this with the community. And the report actually, under part six, where it talks about the new zone, we actually invite people to give us feedback on that new zone. Are we, are we hitting the mark with that zone? Is this, is this what people expect in those areas? And we would like to discuss it with people at the hearings. And I guess it brings me to another point is the hearing should be utilised for, for that because ultimately it will be the commission that decides whether that zone is appropriate zone, yes or no. And before we can looking, can look at where it should be applied. So I think the type of questions, and if I can give people some advice is have questions really about that zone when you go to the hearings.
Thank you.
My second question is, why, at the end of a very long convoluted process that every other municipality in the state has already been through, do we find ourselves in a position where we've got a suggestion for a new zone that no other municipality has had the opportunity to avail themselves of? And we are now in a position where we've made representation because we've been zoned as high conservation to now find out that there's another zone, so we're going to have to expend more money and more time. And most people don't have the capacity to actually follow that process through properly. Do you think that that's an appropriate behaviour of this council?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, Mayor, the, the proposed zone is in direct response to representations that we received. So council had a number of options in this report. The one was to hold the line and say, let's proceed with the landscape conservation zone. The alternative was to look at other zonings. And what is being put on the table is another zone that is trying to balance, I guess, some, some of those challenges that we have. It is a suggestion at the stage. It will be discussed at the hearings. And if, for instance, if the commission decides, well, it's an appropriate zone, we potentially could look at some other areas in municipality to also apply that zone. And it's up to the commission ultimately whether, I guess, they want to go with that approach and also how they contact the relevant landowners. In relation to your commentary about trying to present, I think the commission, and you know, we've put it in our report, is that people that have made a representation can attend the hearings. The hearings are, it's a formal process, but the way that they are managed, it allows people to raise their concerns, to ask questions. And there's, there's a bit of a debate too around those things. So it's not expected that landowners should go and appoint a consultant to do that. It's set up so that landowners or representatives can actually put their case forward. And the way the commission will facilitate those hearings is it's not just a case of people talking. The commission will also be asking questions to both the representatives and council.
Thank you. Ms. Bender.
So what you're saying is that even though we put a representation in for the landscape conservation zone, when we attended the, the hearing, not only will we be discussing that, we'll be discussing the possibility of a zone that hasn't been suggested before, that no other municipality has had access to. Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, Mayor, potentially, yes. It depends on the area. So I think it goes back to the first question that you've asked. We've, we've done a bit of analysis through the municipality and we had a look at where the landscape conservation zone was proposed. We've picked some areas where the lot sizes were approximately 10 hectares or smaller, noting that there's other areas in the municipality that's got the same qualities. I guess the first step that we want to do is to discuss this new zone with the commission. We really, already had some preliminary discussions with them, but actually discuss and see whether it's a workable solution, what people actually think about the zone. And yes, maybe there, there is the possibility that that zone can be more broadly applied. You will note in the report too, for the areas where we didn't propose this new zone, so the areas that is, for all due practical purposes, proposed to proceed in the landscape conservation zone, we actually would like to discuss the concerns about the landscape conservation zone itself with representatives at the, at the hearings. So we want to work through those issues. And there might be, I guess, alternative zoning options, not necessarily always the proposed new PPZ. It could be that we look in some areas of rules zone, or it could be that we in some areas look at split zonings. And I'll use the split zonings as an example. You will note in the report, there's not a lot of recommendations about split zonings. And that's quite intentional because I don't think council officers can dictate for landowners where the line for split zoning should follow. So we actually wrote the report intentionally with the idea to invite people to go to the hearings so we can have those discussions. So one to work through the issues, but also to talk about alternative zoning options where it's appropriate and where it's split zoning, to discuss what that potentially could look like.
So other than tabling this document at the council meeting tonight, that most of us in the room, I think, found out via Facebook, have you made, has the council made any attempt to actually contact all the people whose properties are currently being possibly reassessed with a new zone?
Mr. Standor.
And if not, why not?
Through you, Mayor, I'll keep it simple. It's because we simply don't know if the commission will actually support this new zoning. So the commission advised that they would like us to follow the, the standard process and to submit this. We, simply put, we don't have the time to have those discussions at this point in time. There's pressure to get the report to the commission so that they can actually start with the hearings. They want the hearings done within the next six months. And, you know, I think just from a personal perspective, I think if we go back and forth, we might end up having another three years or another four years. So it would be better actually to have discussions with the commission. The commission provides a platform where it's transparent. They are independent, so it would be a much better situation to have those discussions with the commission than with planning officers.
Thank you. My closing comment would, is that perhaps it would have been much better if this had been discussed with the community some years ago.
Thank you. As much as I appreciate applause, could I just remind people in the public gallery, please, to not, not applaud or intervene in the meeting in any other ways, please? Would you like to come forward?
Thank you. So Valeska de Plese. Let me know if I need to spell the surname.
If you would.
D apostrophe P L E double S E.
Thank you.
At Blackmans Bay.
Thank you.
So, planning is a very complicated and overwhelming world, especially the terminology. Do the community need to have expert witnesses, legal representation and evidence at the hearings to ensure we can confidently engage in the discussions and put forward our concerns?
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. The, as I mentioned earlier, the system is set up that ordinary people can attend the meetings and express their concerns. and express their concerns and interests. The members on the panel, much like we do when we do normal DA applications, know what you mean when you're trying to describe something. So if it's, you know, we're worried about the vegetation or the controls on there, they have an understanding of what the issues are in lay terms. So it's not expected that you do. Some people choose to, some people may choose as a group or area to greg together and have, pay someone to do their representation for them, but it's not an expectation. There have been experts obviously writing some of the reports that support it. The planning commission can also ask for further information during the process. And this is the same process as it's been for the other twenty-eight councils, and that's how they've gone forward, which has seen a mix of some people with representation, but the vast majority with none.
Thank you. And I suspect I know the answer to this question before I ask it, but I would like to still ask it. But could it make a difference at the hearing outcomes if we don't come, we have experts to support us in that process?
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. It's not for me to comment on the decision-making of the planning commission, and we're not them. Like I said, and they've given us the description explanation as well about its intended for ordinary people to be able to present, and there is not a requirement to have to take expert witnesses or employed town planners and the like, or lawyers to those hearings. That's not the intention. They've tried to go on a reasonable approach to it of just ordinary people presenting.
Thank you. And my last question is on another topic, it's about bylaws. I hope this makes sense. In relation to the bylaws in place by Kingborough Council, my question is about what responsibility council has to follow these bylaws. Must they be applicable in every relevant scenario? Or do council use their discretion on when they decide to apply the bylaws?
The acting CEO.
Through you, Mayor. Council applies its bylaws through the lens of its enforcement policy. So there are a range of matters that are considered under that policy. They relate to public safety, environmental protection, available resources, et cetera. So the application of a particular bylaw is subject to a level of discretion, and the guidance for that discretion comes from our enforcement policy.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. I must apologise for our cumbersome microphone setup where we're all sharing. It's not our usual practice, but our system crashed on us recently, so we've got a temporary one. Is there another question? Thank you.
Hello, Beck Owens, Bruni Island landowner. Just to confirm, and you may have already covered this, if you don't already have a representation in place and you are potentially impacted by the changes under these reports, will you be contacted and advised so that you can join as a party? Or do we need to advise our community members to seek out that information and join as a party, join to the hearing process?
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. That'll be the decision of the Tasmanian Planning Commission about how they're going to approach that and contact people or otherwise.
Yep, okay, so people will be safe to share the news, just in case.
Probably recommended.
Okay, yep, thank you. And then in considering the reports tonight, there's a notation in for council with all the risks and factors that they need to consider. And it's reviewed that there is no financial impact to council when they're considering the reports. Has council considered the impact of restrictive zoning on property values and the flow on social and financial impact to the community, and potentially council rates notices going forward?
Ms. Talamore. Or Mr. Standor?
Through you, Mayor. The matter of property valuations, much to the disappointment of the public generally, is not a planning consideration in the decision-making. And certainly there are comments that go both ways about whether it will or won't have impacts. It's not a deciding factor for it. The purpose of the planning controls is about the right outcomes and development for the municipality and the state more generally. So no, they're not considered, there's not a report, there's not an independent report or a professional that has made comments about it.
Okay. Not wanting to use my final question, but just as part of that one, is that something that the planning commission review values or not? Or they don't, it's similar?
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. No, they won't consider that either. And people, if they're really inclined to want to follow that up, then you can look at some of the decisions made for the other municipalities, because there will be comments in there that provide an answer to that.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, in the summary of representations that go forward, it mentions that there are representations for and against the LCZ and SAPs presented. Do you have a notation of how many were for and how many were against the changes being made or proposed to be made?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, Mayor. No, we don't have it at hand. I think it's quite challenging, first of all, because a lot of people didn't just make a representation about the LCZ. They would make a representation about a SAP or a component elsewhere in the municipality. So I guess the simple answer is no, we don't have the numbers. What I would suggest to people is if they're really interested and want to get a broad sense of where we got support or not, have a look at the report. Have a look, first of all, attachment three, which is list all the representations and the key topics, and then go to the relevant section in the report where we've highlighted the number of representations. So it doesn't say, we've received three representation against the LCZ. It will actually just list the representation there. It's quite difficult to get the numbers. We tried to do that before. I would be safe to say that the numbers are always a little bit skewed when you look at it, just because there's, I guess, different ways that people lodge their submissions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Just in reply to that briefly, is that I know when we've looked at other, like the council acting as a planning authority, they have had to read, like, they had the information of how many are for and against particular things. So it'd probably be useful information for, and I know it is tricky to decipher, but I would feel it would be overwhelmingly against, whether or not that is accurate, I'm not sure. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions?
I guess, Kim Phillips from Margate. I wasn't actually going to speak. But there was a comment made earlier about how the planning zones were forward by the TPC, and council officers have only applied those zones to properties. And my question would be, if you're looking at a property that has an existing house on it that is currently environmental living under the old plan, why we would choose to apply LCZ to that instead of rural living, especially on a block as small as two hectares? Because I cannot understand that.
Mr. Standor.
Through you, Mayor. Thanks for the question. Look, I think you're quite right. There are some areas where they're smaller properties that's being proposed for landscape conservation zone, and without knowing the specific details of the property, often where that's happened, it is more about the broader landscape values. So in some areas, you potentially might have smaller lots set amongst larger lots that contribute to landscape conservation zone. So I guess to help you a little bit there, we've indicated in the report that we're happy to look at those, even if there's, even if there's no recommendation about that in the report.
The recommendation is that new zone that you've put forward. And my concern, obviously, as with everyone else, is that this is coming out at a late date. No one's really had enough time to review it in detail. And, I mean, I'm up a valley where no one can see my property. The properties that have been proposed rural living are on the other side of the hill, which are fully visible to everyone. So I just cannot understand, I'm at the bottom of a valley and no one can see me, aside from my neighbour. And you're claiming this is scenic values or landscape values, and there are properties on the other side of the hill that I'm on that are visible from Kingston as you drive along the highway, and they are not zoned. And I just cannot understand it. And when you had the choice when reviewing those representations that we made, you could have chosen instead for that property to apply rural living and let me have my piece, but instead are proposing that I'm bundled with other properties around me that are the same on this, inside of this valley where no one can see us. And now we're going to have to go through this process of, oh, fine, I can show up to planning approval, but I don't think you've really considered the impacts. And I would also like to understand why Kingborough Council chose to do that when other councils, who also have gone through this same process as you, have chosen not to apply LCZ. And in their reporting around that, actually stated that they understood the impacts to their residents, and had chosen not to apply LCZ to those properties for their residents because of their understanding of that impact.
Mr. Standor, did you want to address the application of LCZ by other councils?
I think the question in relation to other councils, we are Kimbra, and Kimbra did take a different approach. So we've acknowledged that in the report. I guess I can't really answer why other councils haven't thought about another zone.
I don't want to know about others. Sorry.
I must stop you. It's not for debate, please let Mr. Standor answer.
The real intent here is to address the concerns that people raised. And we, you know, we acknowledge not everybody might agree with that, and I can totally understand if people think, you know, you should have consulted about this early on. The advice that we've received from the commission is please follow the process, because at the end of the day, the commission is independent, they will manage the process, they will be able to ask the questions. And I think what you have to remember is council's not making the final decision. I don't know if it's been mentioned before. It is the commission. So that's why it's very important that, I think, people, you know, take note of our recommendations in the report. But ultimately, council don't make the final decision. It's the commission, and that's why it's appropriate that, instead of having further consultation at this stage, that can confuse people a lot more, is go directly to the hearings, have a discussion about it. The commission might not have the same opinions as council about zoning in general or the proposed new zoning, and I think it would be the most transparent pathway forward. I did actually have the opportunity this afternoon to discuss this with one of the, I guess, more executive members at the commission, and they've agreed. The hearings will be there for people to raise their concerns, whether it's about the process or the actual zoning or the concerns. It is a much better place to raise these concerns than to raise it with council officers. I guess what we've tried to do is generally try and address those concerns. Whether we've hit the mark, I guess that's open for discussion.
Thank you.
My last question would be, while I acknowledge those comments, does council and council officers and staff acknowledge that the TPC would expect that as you are the group on the ground, you would have a better knowledge, therefore, they're more likely to give weight to your opinion than their own?
Mr. Standor.
They don't have the time to have gone through all of the detail of all of the properties?
Look, I think the, and I have to be careful what I advise about the commission, but what I can say, in my discussions with the commissions, I think it's better for them to have a discussion with the community than with council officers. You know, our process is to try and translate it, and we recognise not everybody might have the same opinion on it. Ultimately, it's the commission, so I guess the commission's got to a point where they actually want to talk to people about it. They want to work through the issues. Some of the issues we might be able to solve through that process, and some of them we don't. I think council's approach or council officers' approach at this stage is, we wanted to put another option on the table. So if it's not option A or B, what's a third option? And I think if we didn't put something up on the table as a third option, it would have actually made the discussion much more difficult moving forward. So I think it's, from an officer level, I think it's very important that we proceed, get to the hearings. The process's been dragged out very long, and it's time that people actually want to sit down and have a discussion. I'm just worried that if we have a separate consultation process before the hearings, it might create expectations that we can't actually push forward. So my advice would be, use the hearings, please attend the hearings. We've encouraged people to do that. We will provide advice as much as we can about that process, but please utilise that process.
Yeah. My final statement would have been that the option was not to have presented a third option, and to have simply let people have the rural living that they wanted. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alison Rogers, tinderbox and Bruni Island landowner. Just to further on from those questions, I've been talking to a number of landowners that are going to potentially be impacted by the landscape conservation zoning. And there's been much talk in the last couple of days in relation to the information in the report and this new proposed bushland and coastal zoning. I don't believe that the people involved in this process with those zonings wanted a new zone proposed. And I think in support of the previous comment, that the rural living zoning probably would have been more applicable to those properties, given that there is this new zoning. And again, I just want to reiterate what the previous lady said. I would suggest that once we get to the hearing stage, that it's too late to discuss this. There's going to be decisions made in those hearings, and it's going to become a very costly exercise for a landowner to appeal those decisions. I would have thought that acting in the best interests of your ratepayers, that given that you have proposed this new zoning, that it goes back to public consultation, and that you have a discussion with those property owners that are going to be affected by this.
Sorry, is that your question, please?
And so therefore, are you prepared to go back to public consultation before going to a hearing to get these matters at least to a point where landowners have some more information, that they can go to the hearings in relation to this?
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. As we've already indicated, we're not proposing to go to consultation with the public before the hearings. It's a two-part process, the representations. It's the written part, which people have done already. The second part is the hearings. It's really important to follow the process, to be heard. If we were to break away from that, do consultation, we go through a lot of delays of people. There are people that need to know what the decision is on the zonings. They're keen to know what those decisions are. It also can raise expectations. If we have discussions with people in Poly Street, oh yes, that sounds good, that sounds good, and then the planning commission doesn't support that, then they've been led down the garden path essentially, when we've got no real certainty of what it is. And it causes confusion amongst the community as well. Not everyone who's here, who are obviously quite engaged, because you've obviously come into the council meeting, which is great to see, but it's just another process and another layer. It's important to follow the process. The other councils have done it. The TPC is strongly recommending that we do it as well, and there's nothing being lost by going to the hearings. It's a really important part of the process.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers.
I'd just like to say that, yes, the other councils have done it, but they have done it in a very different way. And there are implications to these zoning changes for property owners, and we have seen that in some neighbouring municipalities already. And I would have thought that it was better to get it right before those hearings and before it's too late for a landowner to have any input into that decision. If there was some strong public pushback in relation to that, is there an opportunity for the council to change their mind about going to a public consultation process before the hearings?
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, Mayor. There's nothing specifically in the Act that talks about introducing another consultation period or exhibition period during that. It certainly doesn't allow it, doesn't mean it can't be done outside the process. I guess the risk is that the planning commission and the minister decide that this is too long, this is not the process, and they pull the whole process away from us.
Yep. Can we do that?
Do you have a third question?
So my third question would be that, as a councillor who do need to consider the best interests of their municipality, if there was a strong enough pushback by the community, is that then an opportunity to delay that process? Because I think there's many people that would prefer that that was the case, to give them time. There are still many property owners that don't even know that this is happening, and I have talked to many people since January that are absolutely appalled, that they've had no notification about this and have had no option to put a representation in. So is there an opportunity, if we gather enough public municipality members, to actually push back on this?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, Mayor. Through you, Mayor. I have to think how to put this, but I think ultimately it comes down to the decision of the commission. So essentially what, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I would assume you're saying pull the help here. That is something for the commission to decide. If you're asking whether council at this stage can do further consultation, put this report on hold. If that's the question, once again, we will have to go back to the commission. They've given us a deadline to provide the report, which is the 23rd later this week, where we have to provide the report. It will come down to the commission whether they actually give us additional time, if that is put up as a way forward.
Can I just add to that? In relation to the fact that you made a statement that there are people who are not aware that this process has been gone through. Section 35C of LUPA sets out the minimum requirements that are part of the consultation for the draft LPS. And we satisfied all of those. But council, in our discussions as a planning authority previously in relation to this, wanted to go above those standard exhibition requirements. And so we did, it's articulated in page eight of the section 35F report, which will be going to the TPC. We placed additional notices in the Chronicle. We did a number of social media posts, we did media releases, we directly emailed people. We put information on our webpage, we developed an interactive mapping tool that 16,500 people engaged on the page during the period. We held public information sessions at a number of locations which we weren't required to do. We did 10 small group presentations, we did one-on-one consultations during office hours and after hours. And we had the ability to lodge inquiries via email, online form or to speak to council officers. So I don't accept that we haven't consulted adequately and that there might be still people who are largely unaware of this. We have used every mechanism available to us in terms of different forms of media to get the message out to our ratepayers.
Just a comment on that. I'd love to take your door knocking and show you how many people are not aware of this.
Well, I'm not going to debate it. I'm giving you the facts, the facts are outlined in the document. If anyone wants to have a look at page eight, thank you. Are there further questions?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Nikki Crestani, and I have one question, one question that has been bothering me since all of this began. Can I just ask how many people sitting around this round table are affected by LCZ? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there further questions? Thank you.
My name is Lily Von Savagieri.
Sorry, you'll have to speak a little louder, please.
My name is Lily Von Savagieri.
Thank you.
The council states in its report that Kimbra has a unique landscape values that set it apart from other council areas in the state and requires additional protection under the planning scheme. What are these unique values? How were they determined and by who?
Mr. Standard.
Through you, Mayor. I'm going to keep that response very short. It's, I've mentioned it before, it's outlined in the LPAS supporting document that was exhibited, that I guess that discussion around the scenic values and what is expected from the landscape conservation zone is derived from not only the state government's own guidelines, but also comes from, I guess, feedback from other LPAS hearings. For instance, the UN Valley, where the commissioner actually made a statement and they provided to council what we should consider as landscape values. What you will note is in that specific document, we acknowledge that people might have different views about landscape values. And yes, it is quite challenging. There are some areas where the landscape conservation zone is proposed and you might have a property in that specific area where you don't necessarily think you have landscape values on your property. But in some areas, it's more about the broader values in that area. A lot of people do ask us, have you done any further assessments on the landscape values? The simple answer is no. We've used the guidelines, we're doing a translation process from one planning scheme to another planning scheme. And I'm going to go back, we invite people to come to the hearings and actually explore those options with us and also to advise us if they don't agree. And, you know, ultimately, it will be a decision for the commission to make.
Thank you. Any further questions? No, thank you. We will move on. We're up to still page two, questions on notice from the public. We had two, the first in relation to Mr. Biggins about purchasing policy with a response from Mr. Smee. The second one in relation to an audit panel from Ms. Landon and a response from Mr. Spinks. If any member of the community does wish to submit a question on notice, you can do so by completing the relevant form on council's website or by emailing us at kacey@kimbra.taz.gov.au. Takes us to page four, questions without notice from councillors. Does any councillor wish to ask a question without notice? No, thank you. Questions on notice from councillors. At the time the agenda was compiled, there were no questions on notice from councillors. Open session of council now adjourns and the planning authority of council commences at 6:45pm. We're on page five, officers' reports to planning authority. Report on the representations received during the exhibition of the Kimbra Draft Local Provisions Schedule with a recommendation on page 13. And I'm looking for a mover and a second, please. Moved councillor Cordova, seconded councillor Fox. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all the people who are here tonight to have their say and also who are watching online. The purpose of the report before us is to provide an overview of the representations that were received during the exhibition of the Kimbra Draft Local Provisions Schedule for the incoming Tasmanian Planning Scheme. The report includes a summary of the representations and it includes recommendations to the TPC to consider as part of the public hearing process before a final decision is made. The recommendation is that this council receives and notes the report under S35S and S35G of the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993. And also that we, if the recommendation is passed tonight, that we allow the CEO to utilise his delegations to submit the attached reports to the TPC in accordance with those provisions. I want to start my contribution by thanking the community for their engagement. This is critical to democracy, it's critical to transparency, it's critical to the feeling of a co-designed process as opposed to a process where things are done to people. Having the opportunity to have your say about how you feel is critical. But it's also critical that it's not just a tokenistic process. It's critical that there's genuine engagement, which means that the opportunity is there to actually co-design what our future towns, cities, rural areas look like. It isn't just about residential property, it's about commercial and industrial, it's about agricultural. It isn't just about individual households and families, although they are indeed a critical part of the fabric of this community. And of course, I reflect and recognise and acknowledge the absolute, the absolute passion that people have about trying to protect their patch and trying to leave something better for their children and to try and improve the community. So I get why this is so powerful to so many people and I get why it can be so scary for so many people. The state government came up with the idea of changing the planning scheme and people have a variety of opinions on whether that was a good thing or not. But here we find ourselves where we're embarking upon a process where we are trying as best we can to listen to community feedback, to then participate in the process with the planning commission, which is essentially auspiced by the state government. It's, you know, we have a limited capacity to shape what the state does as a state government. But we still can use our platform and we can use our position as a planning authority and also as a local council. We can use that position to try and shape the way that our community, our towns, our cities and our rural places look in the future. So I'd like to start my brief contribution and because I'm fascinated to hear what my colleagues will say and discuss in tonight's contributions. But I want to start by thanking the community for their participation. But I also want to thank sincerely our council officers and the staff here at Kimbra Council for the work that they have done, the enormous body of work. I mean, it was hard for me to get through all of the contributions. But imagine what it's like to be a staff member, a team member here at Kimbra Council, working really hard. And we all have the best interests of the community at heart. Of course, we have different opinions about how to get there, but we're all trying to do what's best for individuals and for the community as a whole. So I want to thank the staff very sincerely. I also want to thank all those many, many, many people who made submissions. And of course, all the people here tonight. Often, it isn't easy. And we here around this table that are elected representatives, it's an enormous privilege, but it's also, it can be tough sometimes. And I just want to reflect on the fact that we are all elected by the community. So even though our individual viewpoints at an individual time may not exactly reflect those of individual community members, we are elected by the community. And therefore, we ultimately will be accountable to that community at the very next polling day. But here we are to talk about the reports that are before us and the opportunity that the public hearings will provide. I'm moving this today because I hope that those public hearings will provide an opportunity to co-design the outcomes with the Tasmanian Planning Commission. So I reiterate that today, we're making a decision about whether or not we note the report and whether or not we allow the CEO to submit the report to the Tasmanian Planning Commission. That's what we're trying to decide tonight. Do we let that happen or do we press pause on that? And of course, councillors do have the opportunity to change the recommendation if they so wish. We do have the opportunity to change things and I look forward to that debate and that process as it unfolds in the discussions tonight. I do have, if you'll indulge me, Mayor, a couple of questions that I might take the opportunity now to ask. The first question is around, on page 67 or 68 of the report, I'm looking at that table that shows the difference between the LCZ, the rural living, the proposed Kimbra bushland and coastal living zone. I do note that there's mention made under the rural, under the rural living about vehicle sales and service or vehicle refuelling and service businesses. I'd just like some clarity over the difference between, under the proposed Kimbra bushland and coastal living zone as opposed to the rural living zone, what are some examples of the business activities that can be undertaken in the one proposed zone as opposed to in the other? If that's not too putting everyone on the spot.
Mr. Standard.
Through you, Mayor. No, that's a very good question. Look, I'll mostly answer it in a general approach. So when we started looking at the proposed new zone, one of the challenges that we have is, if you look at those areas where we're proposing the new zone, it is residential areas. And so the rural living potentially could introduce a lot of uses that you historically wouldn't have seen in those areas. So what we've tried to do with the new zone is try and balance it. Where we say, you know, you can still allow residential development to occur. We've actually streamlined the pathway that people can get approval for dwelling within the new zone. We've actually, if you look on that table and we've marked it in yellow so that people can see, we've put in a pathway where you don't need a permit if it's a dwelling within a building envelope. But then we go also where we say we support uses that's compatible with that residential use. And it may be some of those, I guess, more intense commercial uses might not be appropriate in that zone. And so that's where we kind of refined it. And to have a look at, what do we find in those areas? If you go through the municipality, what's the type of uses that you find? And we try to accommodate that in the land use table of that new zone. I guess we would like to know from the community whether that's the right approach. Is there something else that we've missed that people would like to see in that zone, in their residential areas? So I think it's important to go back, this is a residential area. What do you expect in your residential area? And so we've put some suggestions up in this report that we would like to discuss with the commission, but also the community. And I guess it's a little bit more flexible than the landscape conservation zones provided and definitely more flexible than the current environmental living zones provided. And I guess the last statement that I make, that new zone, the focus is there on balance. Trying to balance, some of those areas might have some landscape values, but we understand people living there, it's existing residential areas. And how do we protect that residential amenity? So residential amenity is something that is mentioned throughout that proposed new zone. And that was really the intention behind that. Put a focus back on the residential amenity. But like I said before, we would like to know from the community, did we get it right? Yes or no?
Thank you. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. And through you, Mayor, my next question is about section 8.2 of the officers' report. So that's on page 11 of my agenda. And the quote here, it says that the, quote, "The hearings will commence approximately within a month after the S35F report has been submitted to the TPC and is expected to be completed before the end of 2025", end quote. So my question is a broad one, which is will there be enough time in the hearings? If everybody who is entitled to attend those public hearings, will they all get the opportunity to speak? And if so, for how long? And the thrust of my question is around, maybe is it better to be in groups or not? Because, for example, will the Waitapuna Aboriginal Corporation get just as much time to speak as the individual homeowner? And will they get just as much time to speak as the business owner or the Bruny Island community group? How will the division of time be organised at those public hearings to make sure everybody gets their say?
I imagine that'll be a matter for the TPC to determine. But I know they're very committed to the length of consultation and providing adequate opportunity. And they've already spoken about having at least two weeks just for Bruny Island residents, including on the island. But Ms. Talamore, could you add to that, please?
Through you, Mayor, yes, you're right. It is up to the TPC to organise and decide how the hearings will be timed. They've set aside at this point in time 30-plus days. So it'll go all the way through to mid-December. Of course, if they need to have more days, they will need to put on more days because it's a requirement that everyone has an opportunity to speak. There's nothing that's been published to say what their limit is, whether it's half an hour or three hours. It doesn't say that, it'll be relevant. They will try and cluster some of the relevant representations together because then people are building on each other's discussions potentially, which is in the interest of the residents. But of course, that can be difficult because people have work commitments and things like that. So people have got to understand there's going to be flexibility. But they will try and cluster it, whether it's on a theme or whether it's on a particular area. There'll be hearings held here in Kingston at the hub. There'll be hearings in the city and there'll be hearings on the island as well.
Councillor Cordova.
Thank you. I'll just conclude my remarks, Mayor, by once again thanking the community, the staff and everybody involved for their engagement on the process and reflecting on something that we've heard so far tonight around the idea that the public hearings will be an opportunity to participate, to say, well, you know, if I don't like this particular aspect, then here's my idea for how we should change it. Here's what I want for my neighbourhood. The public hearings are the opportunity to get more involved. So far, this process has been a bit of an opportunity and I've read all of the submissions and I thank everybody for their participation in that. And now the next opportunity is the public hearings. And that's why I really do implore and encourage everybody who is entitled to go to those public hearings to get along to them and have their say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Cordova. Further speakers. Councillor Fox.
I want to echo everything that councillor Cordova has said in terms of the amount of work that this project has entailed from the staff. And I'm really quite impressed how many people have become involved. But I'm also aware, this is one of the largest documents I've ever had to read in a very short, in a very short space of time since my time on council. And I realise it's very complicated. The last thing I want to do right now is to get involved in a debate or to have further discussion on these issues because I know we're only a small way into this process. We need to concentrate on the next phase, on getting the commission involved in what's come up. Perhaps they'll draw a red line through it, perhaps they'll run with it. But it really isn't our baby, basically. It's the commission's baby. We are... We are conduit for this information. And I think it's very important that we don't hold up this process because we're the last council in Tasmania to be doing this. There's a lot of experience that's gone into what's been proposed for us. And the commission is also very experienced in what's been proposed to them in the past. And hopefully, there will be a good resolution. And whatever they come up with at the next phase, we still have an opportunity to discuss at that point in time, and the community does too. So I recommend the motion, and I thank everybody most sincerely for the work that's gone into this, particularly our planning staff who've worked day and night and have really put in the hard yards. So I'd look forward to what other people have to say, and I recommend the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Further contributions? Councillor Dean?
Yeah, thanks. Mayor, I've just, I've got quite a few questions, but I'll just fire off a few. If other people want to jump in, by all means, go for it. Obviously, there's a bit of concern around the environmental living as that doesn't, that's not a zone in the new scheme. So what I'm hearing is that people would like to have just simply been transferred to rural living, whether it's through tonight or correspondence. Could I just ask simply, why weren't people simply transferred from environmental living zone to rural living?
Mr. Standar.
If that was the case, most probably would have made my job a little bit easier. But I guess it's the guidelines. The guidelines got specific provisions, and there's different requirements for different zones. We've tried to explain that in both the LPs supporting document and also within this report on the submission. So council officers acknowledge it's a challenging process. We understand people might not have the same opinion as we have. I guess the commission also acknowledged it's challenging. We did discuss the new zone with them upfront. We most probably wouldn't have proceeded with that option if there was not, I would say, encouragement from the commission to look at those options. I guess for people that feel that they still want to be, or they want the commission to consider the rural living for their zone, use the hearings for that process. And, you know, I guess, look at the guidelines. When you have a discussion with the commission, I know not everybody is a town planner, but have a look at the guidelines and have a look at particularly the introduction where we talk about the landscape conservation zone and the challenges that we had from officer level trying to do that. Have a look at that and build on that, you know? And people can disagree with council officers, we understand that, that's totally fine. I guess to just apply the rural living zone across the municipality, I guess from a professional point of view, would have been quite a significant risk. I guess we are trying to do the best we can. But we acknowledge people might have different opinions, and we would like to discuss that with people. And it may be that the commission agrees with the community on some of those aspects. So I've got no doubt that the commission might have different opinions about whether the landscape conservation zone or rural living zone should be applied. We've already had some of those discussions. So I think this is just the point in time where the community actually need to get to the table and have that discussion with the commission.
Councillor Dean.
Thanks, Mayor. I think what I'm trying to just understand also for, there's a lot of people, I guess, listening to this as well, as to how we got to this point where I suppose we have actually proposed an entirely new zone. So what I'm hearing is, we couldn't simply just transfer environmental living to rural because it was the view under the guidelines that that wouldn't be the most applicable. So what we ended up doing in 2019, from my understanding, we transferred a lot of those to landscape conservation zone. Is that a correct kind of statement?
Through you, Mayor. I think I'll step you through the process. So in 2019, council submitted a draft LPs to the commission. Back at that point in time, a lot of the properties that are currently zoned environmental living were proposed to go to the landscape conservation zone. It's not all properties. A lot of the properties in the environmental living zone were also proposed to, some of them to go to the rural living zone, some of them to the rural zone, some of them to the low-density zone. As part of the hearing process, the commission indicated to us that they would like us to undertake a bit of a review of the landscape conservation zone. They've highlighted that there's potentially opportunity to look at some areas applying the rural living zone as alternative to landscape conservation zone, and we did that. So the number, and I can't recall the exact number, but we did reduce the amount of properties in the environment, in the landscape conservation zone quite significantly at that process. And then by the end of last year, the commission gave council a direction where the council asked us actually to further make some amendments. So the document that was exhibited for the public's view is actually a direct result of the commission's directions. And so, and it was not just about the landscape conservation zone. So one of the key things which a lot of people don't talk about is the agricultural zone. The commission directed council to apply that zone more broadly in the municipality and on Bruny Island, and it's the same for the landscape conservation zone. So I guess we find ourselves now in a situation where we've reduced the landscape conservation zone. A lot of people still indicated that they've got problems with the landscape conservation zone. And what the report is essentially doing is three things. It is saying to some landowners, hey, we've got an alternative here. We want you to look at this alternative. Is this something that you feel comfortable with? Yes or no? The second thing that the report is suggesting is that we would like to discuss the concerns about the landscape conservation zone with people at the hearings. And through that process, we might actually change some of the zoning once again. There's also a component to look at split zonings in areas, particularly for your larger lots where you might have some landscape values, but you also have some rural practices. So we would like to discuss those issues with the landowners. So I think, in a general sense, the landscape conservation zone has been reduced through this process. And now we're at a stage where we kind of really need to discuss with the commission, what's the way forward? Do we introduce the PPZ, the new zone? Do we look at some areas applying the rural living more broadly? Or do we hold the line in the landscape conservation zone? And that's really not, I think, a discussion or a decision that council officers should be making. We really need to discuss that with the community.
Councillor Dean.
Thank you. So just to kind of clarify this in my mind and for anyone listening, we applied landscape conservation zone fairly broadly in 2019. The feedback from the commission and from the community was, there were issues. People felt there were issues around permitted uses and discretionary uses. So as the planning department, what I'm hearing is, we stepped that back somewhat and have proposed some kind of middle ground with a PPZ. And so is that kind of, but it's obviously, as you've said, it still needs to be tested. Is that kind of an accurate summation of where we're at?
Just for the record, please.
Through you, Mayor, yes, I think that's accurate record.
Okay. So just to follow up then. So we have got quite a different, I suppose, LPS than 2019 and even previously exhibited because we now have a PPZ in place or recommended. Why wouldn't we re-exhibit that and have the community have a say about that?
Ms. Tylermore.
Through you, Mayor, the TPC may direct that it needs to be re-exhibited or some sort of public consultation.
So re-exhibiting is something that, because of the deadline, we aren't able to now, right now, say... Are there any risks involved if we were to say right now, we're not going to submit by the 23rd of July?
Ms. Tylermore.
Through you, Mayor, there's a couple of things. One, whether representation's been received within the exhibition period because that would now be outside the exhibition period. It's very specific in the Act, as it is for ordinary DAs as well, about when they need to be received. And secondly, as I mentioned before, under 35T is the ability of the commission to call the whole process in because they don't agree that we've taken the right process or managing the planning scheme properly at this point. And then it's out of our hands, and they get to make all the decisions entirely on their own, which I think is a risk. How they would do that and how it would play out, I don't know the details specifically. But asking the risk, that is one of them.
Councillor Dean. Oh, no, Mr. Standar, apologies.
Through you, Mayor, if I could just add something to that because I think it's about the timing. And so if this goes through tonight and we send the reports to the commission, I guess the commission will assess what council recommended at this point in time. It's most very appropriate that I mention that the commission, if they feel that they need to direct council to make further changes, and that includes the PPZ, they will need to decide whether those changes are substantial. So we could potentially find ourselves that we have to re-exhibit regardless. I guess from my point of view, it would be slightly dangerous to do at this point in time because we don't know if the commission, for instance, will accept the PPZ. So we better first have a discussion with the commission, understand if there's appetite to proceed with that zoning. And then the commission will obviously direct council which way to go. And it may happen that we have to re-exhibit. It's, I most probably, I don't want to talk on behalf of the commission. Nobody wants to re-exhibit and drag the process out longer. But, you know, we might end up at that situation in future.
Councillor Dean.
So just to clarify, what I'm hearing is there is a risk that if we went out now to re-exhibit with the PPZ, the coastal bushland new zone, 60 days, we go and tell the community, notify the affected landowners. There is a risk that, you know, people are concerned or have their questions or whatever, that then we still note and defer this, that then the commission says, oh, well, actually, that's, might not even happen. So therefore, we might, we're at risk of setting different expectations. Or is that the risk that I'm hearing?
Ms. Tylermore.
I just want to make it clear that making representation outside the exhibition period is a risk in itself because the tribunal, the planning commission may just say, you've done it outside of then, you can't be a party to the appeal, you're not going to be heard at the table.
Just want to follow up on this topic. It is noted in the report about the substantial, I use quotation marks there, about changes for it to be re-exhibited. Could you potentially just give us an idea, what would constitute substantial? I mean, we've gone for a whole new zone that doesn't actually exist, so any ideas?
Through you, Mayor.
Ms. Tylermore.
Through you, Mayor. No, we can't give you a definition of substantial that's up to the TPC. We can't speak on their behalf or presume to know what they would define.
Councillor Dean.
I've got a bunch of other questions, but I'm...
That's all right, you can keep going.
No, I've got other topics. I think this is probably the topic that people ask.
Okay. Councillor Street, is that you with your light on?
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions to start off with. And I suppose they're predicated on the basis that, I don't want to say one part is more important than the other, but perhaps the most important part of this decision tonight is the submission of the 35F report in respect of the LPS. And then there's also the 35G statement, which is effectively having reviewed the representations for the exhibited LPS and having considered the draft LPS, our, or council's, recommendations in relation to the state planning provisions. So my first question is, is there any requirement to make a section 35G statement?
Ms. Tylermore.
Through you, Mayor, it's not a mandatory requirement, but the 35F is a mandatory requirement.
Councillor Street.
Is there a timeframe on the submission of a section 35G report?
Ms. Tylermore.
Through you, Mayor, the timeframe is 28 days after, after the 35F, after the 35F report. So there are 28 days that it can occur.
Where does that come from?
It's in the Act.
Mr. Standar.
I was going to say, is it? Because that's why I'm asking the question.
Through you, Mayor, I'll have to double check, but when I viewed it early on, it's actually not a stipulation in the Act. However, there's a practice note that was issued by the commission, and it talks about 28 days. I'm happy to be corrected, but I couldn't pick up 28 days in the Act. But it's a requirement from the commission.
Right, okay.
Councillor Street.
It just seemed to me like section 35G could potentially stand on its own and we could make a submission to the commission whenever we, or a statement to the commission whenever we felt like it, to the effect that we thought that there were amendments to the state planning provisions that were required. So having said that, I suppose what I'm trying to understand is that, and I understand, and I don't want to focus too much on the landscape conservation zone because there is so much more to this than just the landscape conservation zone. But the reality is that the majority of concerns and commentary that we've received as councillors has been in relation to the landscape conservation zone. There's nobody jumping up and down about the fact that they've been transferred to the general residential zone. It's just a fact that we need to accept. Can I understand the reasoning behind, with the significant community concern around the already restrictive nature of the landscape conservation zone? And I understand the reasons why it's, why the planning restrictions are there. In that zoning, I'm not seeking to relitigate that. But why, when there's been such community concern about it, we've seen fit to make a section 35G statement that effectively says, well, we think that the restrictions should go further?
Mr. Standar.
Through you, Mayor, yes, we are aware that that's a public sentiment. I think if I look back at what council provided in the report, the intention was not necessarily to make it more restrictive. It's more to do with the operational aspects of that clause. It talks about a discretionary provision in the zoning and our development assessment offices. And we've got some advice from other people that, elsewhere in the state that is dealing with that zone at the moment, that indicated it's not quite clear what the zone actually is trying to achieve. So what we've put in the section 35 report was, I guess, a suggestion for the state government to have a look at that generic provision across the state, to have a look and see whether there's opportunity to make it a little bit clearer what the intent of that zone is, or that specific provision is. It is not, the submission was not based on trying to make things more restrictive in Kimbra. It's two separate processes. And I guess it's up to the minister at the end of the day to decide whether there's opportunity to take that on board and to consider that as part of the statewide planning review. Those provisions will have to go through a broad consultation process, which is beyond Kimbra. So I guess to sum up, the intention was not to make it more restrictive, but I can understand if people see it that way. But that's certainly not where we came from.
So if there were ever...
Councillor Street.
Sorry, Mayor. If there were ever a situation in which the commission made a recommendation to the minister that those provisions be looked at for amendment, there's then a separate process, separate consultation process before that amendment occurs?
Mr. Standar.
Through you, Mayor, yes, correct. And I did actually call the commission today, actually, just to clarify that. There's not a lot of information about that process. Once again, I don't want to talk on behalf of the commission, but my understanding is that they've received a number of section 35G reports from various councils, and the intent is to bundle up all those responses and to potentially consider that as part of the review if there's merit in some of those representations. So it shouldn't have an impact on our LPS.
Councillor Street.
Thank you. This is a very difficult issue for councillors. I've found it to be a very difficult issue myself. The difficulty that I have, and I thank every member of the community who's reached out to me to talk to me about this issue, those that I've been able to talk to... to talk to me about this issue, those that I've been able to talk to in person. If you have emailed me, rest assured that your email has been read as well, especially over the last few days. I've not been able to come back to everyone. The issue that I have is that when I speak to people about their concerns around the application of the zoning as it applies to their property, invariably I can understand their point and where they are coming from. My ability as an individual councillor to take that on board and amend the proposed zoning on a granular level is very limited. And that's notwithstanding the fact that I understand exactly where you're coming from. The only glimmer of hope that I can provide you is that, as somebody who has experience appearing in the Tasmanian Planning Commission, I want to assure the community that they are set up and take very seriously their obligation to lay representatives and property owners who come to the commission with a submission to make about a particular property. I have seen firsthand how the commission goes about that. And some of the most powerful submissions that I have seen, which have then resulted in outcomes in the planning commission, have been from lay representatives. So I want to assure you that the things that staff are saying tonight about the way in which the commission conducts themselves generally, I know from personal experience that that is the case. For my part as a councillor, this is not something that I am going to sit back and watch passively unfold in the commission either. I think we have an obligation as councillors to hold each other and our CEO and our staff to account about the way in which council conduct themselves in these hearings and the way in which these matters are dealt with. And I take it face value, and I'm really grateful for the comments that our staff have made about the way in which it's intended that that's going to occur. And I don't think we'd be doing our job if we didn't make sure that that was what happens. But again, I'm really grateful for those comments and do trust that that's the way that council are going to conduct themselves. So I'm not able to sit here and on a granular level, change the colouring on zoning maps. That's not something that I, as one councillor, I'm able to do. But I can assure you that we will be making sure, or I will be making sure as a councillor, that the things that have been said here tonight are not simply platitudes that they are putting to practice. And I really encourage anybody that has a concern about the way in which the zoning applies to their property to go to the planning commission and make that submission and trust that they are going to, the commissioners are going to assist you to make sure that your voice is heard on that. As I said, and I just reiterate, some of the most powerful and effective representations that I saw in the commission were made by lay representatives, so please do that. And again, please know that we're not just going to sit here and watch it unfold either.
Thank you, councillor Street. Further contributions, councillor Bain.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a couple of questions to begin with. The first one, I think it's pretty basic, but just to reiterate, I guess, is it fair to say that the majority of submissions that were submitted about LCZ were concerns around restricting the ability to develop?
Mr Standor.
Through you, ma'am, yes, I think it's a simple answer for that. It is, a lot of the submissions indicated concerns about the discretionary pathway for the landscape conservation zone. And if I can be cheeky and say, that is something that we try to resolve through the PPZ.
councillor Bain.
Thank you, ma'am, that was going to be my next question. So the new PPZ zone that's been proposed, that would be easy, that will be easy to develop in both the LCZ and the previous environmental living zone?
Mr Standor.
Through you, ma'am, that's correct. So what the new zone is proposing are actually two pathways. It's a no permit required pathway if it's within a building envelope on a sealed plan. Otherwise, it's permitted, which is a drastic move from what we've had under the landscape conservation zone.
councillor Bain.
Thank you. And just a couple of questions about in the lead up to the hearings and the hearings themselves. Will representatives be able to contact council with questions in the lead up to the hearings for this new zone? In regards to this new zone?
Ms Talamol.
Through you, ma'am, yes, the public can contact us about it if they'd like to understand it better or how it applies, because we appreciate reading parts of the scheme isn't always straightforward. And that goes for all the zones and code overlays. Of course, they can call us about the hearings and what to expect on the day of the hearings and things like that. We can provide that advice.
councillor Bain.
Thank you. And in regards to the hearings themselves, the new zone, and that's going to be your final decision for the TPC. So what part of the process will they be able to say, yes, this is a live option, as far as the new zone?
Ms Talamol.
Through you, ma'am, we can't answer that. It'll be up to the TPC about how they conduct it, whether they do it during or at the end, or bring people back, or yeah, it's unknown how they're going to manage that.
councillor Bain.
So in regards to that, will the representatives nearly need to have like two options leading into the hearings? Like if they're currently slated for LCZ, will they have, need to have two preferences? One, say, if the new zone is approved by the TPC, and a backup option of rural living zone if it's not approved?
Ms Talamol.
Through you, ma'am, a really important element is for them to express what their key concerns are. So it's, I wouldn't advise unless you've got a, if you're a little unsure how to read the different zones and how to apply them, you'd best to express what it is you're saying. So you know, you may have a scenario, I have a house, but actually I want to build a second house, and I intend to extend this. Or I, there's nothing on the land, but I'd really like to put some visitor accommodations on there. Now, they're not going to go down to whether you can or can't do that, but if they can understand what it is you're after, then they can help guide that. So, excuse me, even if we didn't have the PPZ, the TPC may very well turn around and go, no, well, actually, you're all wrong, it should actually be this zone instead. And I think that's a bit onerous to expect everyone to know every zone that's along the way. So what is likely to occur and what we witnessed for other hearings is asking, you know, what is it you're after? And I think a really important question, and this is what we didn't get through the written submissions, is but why are you concerned about that? So as an example with the LCZ, what is it specifically about the LCZ that you understand or potentially misunderstand, or what you perceive are the issues? Because then it helps them to either explain it to them, not as a sales pitch, but simply to explain it and say, okay, so if that's what your main concern is, this is what it would look like in this other zone. So yeah, they don't need to be fully prepared necessarily, and they can, they can ask us questions about what the difference is, or they can say, my example is, I've got a house and I want to extend the house. What are the differences between that? Then we can help try and navigate them for them. It is worth saying that it's very uncommon nationally to have spot zoning. So it's sort of very strange to have one LCZ and everyone else's rural living around them. So they're not likely to do that, doesn't really occur. A bit different in the commercial, sort of industrially type ones, where you do have a specific zoning. They might use a site-specific qualification or something to that effect for particular businesses that operate. And we do have those that exist already, but generally, it's a collective. Properties aren't just looked at from between the boundaries, it's a collective approach to a community and an area, and the values that they may have, or the hazards that they may have in those areas.
Mr Standor wanted to add something to that.
Thank you, ma'am. Just in relation to your question, whether people should put up both zones or have a discussion, the commission will lead that discussion, and they will explore all options. And so I agree with my manager. If you look at some of the other hearings, that's the way the commission conducted. They do explore what people want to do, and then they would explore alternative options. Essentially, what council's done in this report is put a third option on the table for some people. You know, it might be very simplistic in some areas, it's landscape conservation zone or rural living zone. This is a third option, and it's the same approach with the SAPs. I think there's multiple options. The approach that this report is taking is we're not fixated on a specific idea. These are avenues we want to explore, and that's why it's so crucial that we want to get to the hearings, because we are quite open-minded about how this could proceed. And certainly, what I understand from the commission is, no matter what council put in a report as a recommendation, they might have their own ideas of how the zoning should play out, and that they will explore that with the representatives.
Thank you, councillor Bain.
Okay, thank you. So my interpretation of that is, if any of the representatives have got questions about the new zones, come and talk to council about it before the hearings. But then the key message is going to the hearings and having those conversations, talking it through with the people that are going to make the decisions. Council officers are also going to be there to assist as well, so that's great. My, I think my final question for now is, in regards to Bruni Island, are the hearings there going to be any different to the hearings for the remainder of Kimberley?
Ms Talamol.
Through you, ma'am, no, the format will need to be the same for Equity. It'll be a different venue and the different people that are there, but no, it should all be run the same.
Okay. So just to follow up, we are expecting, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Mr Standor.
I generally don't talk that much, but I feel like I have to pitch in. I think what I could mention is, in relation to Bruni Island, because I know I've received a lot of phone calls since the agenda came out, the recommendations in the report are very open-ended. I think there's almost no recommendation for Bruni Island, and that's very intentional. A lot of the representations that we received on Bruni Island indicated concerns with the proposed SAP, the underlying zonings, and also in some instances, the code. Often, it's a case where people didn't really provide us with a lot of information, what the concerns are. So we had conversations with the commission, and even though the structure of the hearings will be similar on Bruni Island, I think the intent is actually to explore multiple options during that process. The commission is very aware of the sentiment on Bruni Island. And I don't want to talk on their behalf, but I think they must really appreciate that we didn't make a lot of recommendations on Bruni Island to first have those discussions. I think it's very important to have those discussions than just council officers making recommendations, once again, that the community is not happy with. So the intent is to have those hearings on Bruni Island with that in mind. And that's mostly why they initially indicated two weeks for hearings on Bruni Island. Obviously, it will depend on how many people actually accept the invites to come to the hearings. So what I would say to people, if the commission sends you an invite, please get back to them. Accept that invite, because that will ultimately determine how many hearings we've got on Bruni Island, but also in the rest of the municipality.
Thank you, councillor Bain.
Thank you. And just finally, thank you to the staff, because this has been a mountain of work, and it's a very, very detailed report and a complex thing to go through. And thank you to all the members of the public for engaging, because it's great to hear the feedback.
Before I go to councillor Antoli, can I just ask a follow-up question in relation to Bruni Island? And it was a question that came in an email today from a resident who wanted to know how the new zone would affect a Bruni Island SAP. Mr Standor.
Good question. I think the zone, in a way, most probably, and we've made some comments in there, the zone will be as proposed in part six of the report. However, we acknowledge that on Bruni Island, we want a little bit more flexibility for certain types of uses. So for instance, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, tourist operations and things like that. It's most probably something that we can accommodate in that zone. So what we want to discuss with the community on Bruni Island is, okay, so if we apply that zone, what are the type of uses that you think is also appropriate in that zone? And that will really depend on where we apply the zone. So that's why it's so important to have those discussions with the community on Bruni Island. So there is ability under the Bruni Island SAP to actually tweak any of the zones, to make it, to address people's concerns on Bruni Island. So when people look, for instance, in the landscape conservation zone, there's the ability to tweak that zone in the SAP. And I think that is something that people forget. People see the SAP as another layer of complexity, which I totally can understand. But there's also opportunity through the SAP to change the zonings here and there to address community needs and concerns. So it's very important. The one thing that we didn't receive in the representations, while a lot of people did actually provide a lot of information, but not a lot of people provided solutions, and that's the kind of stuff that we need to discuss with people at the hearings.
Thank you. And can I just, sorry, one more question before I go to councillor Antoli. A question's been asked, why are we the only council needing that new PPZ? I guess it's like, the others, I'm assuming the answer is that the others didn't think to propose a new one? Or is it because of the number of translations that were going to be done to LCZ? Can you help me with that one, please?
Yes, look, we're the only council that obviously proposed the Kimberley coastal bushland zone. But a PPZ, the intent to provide a new zone for a municipality is not unique. We already have one. It's a small road to the back of the Margate Shopping Centre, that's a PPZ. It's only got one control in it. But I'll use a different example elsewhere in the state. One of the councils, one of their islands, they introduced a whole PPZ for their island. And it's a similar mechanism that all other councils have available. A lot of councils just chose not to do that. It's not an easy task to do, it takes a lot of work to do that, because you have to demonstrate that it complies with all the statewide policies and guidelines. And then on top of that, you actually have to draft the controls, which is not in the capability of everybody to do that. So it's quite challenging. I think we find ourselves in a unique situation that we proposed this, and it was really, I guess, from a council officer's side, was a way to try and address those concerns in a positive manner. So it's coming from a good place.
Thank you. councillor Antoli, I had you next on my list.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks to the staff, and thanks to everyone in the gallery for their questions. And similar to what councillor Fox and councillor Street said, it's been frankly, an overwhelming amount of stuff to read. And I personally, upon reflection, would have loved, and I don't know if this is possible, ma'am, but I would have loved for us to workshop the thirty-five ZFs and Gs beforehand, before getting here. Would have helped us, I think, a lot better. That's my personal opinion, and I'm not sure if that's actually, actually, I'll ask that as a question. Would that have been possible?
Ms Talamol.
Through you, ma'am, we did have a workshop before the council meeting.
But workshopping the thirty-five F and G?
So what, sorry, just to clarify a question, you're saying with the documents, completed documents in front of us?
Yes.
Ms Talamol.
Through you, ma'am, if we could invent more time and more resources to have got it done faster, that would have been fantastic, but we were still working on it, working towards a timeframe. We could have done it incomplete with the risk of frustration that it was incomplete. I'm not sure the outcomes that would have been different from the discussion tonight. It is acknowledged, it's a very long document, it's a complicated matter. I don't think anyone's pretending that planning reform is a simple matter. Could it have been done? Possibly it could have.
councillor Antoli.
Thank you. I definitely would have preferred that it would have been done. I would, I think I'd rather be here in one or two council meetings' time, rather than doing it all so rushed today, given that we all work full-time.
I think the difficulty is the deadline of when we've got to get back to the TPC. Is that correct? Yep.
What's the date of that deadline?
Twenty-third of July.
Twenty-third of July.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. Yeah, it's taken a long time to get here. It's a lot to digest. Okay, I'll jump into some questions. As I understand it, nearly all of the LCZ properties, no, as I understand it, the majority of the LCZ properties came from the environmental living zone, is that right? Or was it more than that? Or was it more than that?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor, yes, that's correct.
Yeah. And from my recollection, definitely the new zone is best for most, if not all of these. The concern I have is how the, correct me if I'm wrong, the environmental living zone, according to the guidelines, residential use is a priority or the priority. Is that right?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor, maybe I've missed something in your question there. It's not the environmental living zone, it's a landscape conservation zone. I guess that you referred to, so there's a, I'll break it down if I can.
No, the old, the old ELZ was residential use a priority in that?
Correct. It's a residential zone that also aims to protect the environment.
So why would we have chosen to take the majority of the ELZs, which is residential, into the LCZ, which is discretionary and not the focus? Why wouldn't we have then put them into rural living instead?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor, if you look at the guidelines, the rural living zone, the guidelines actually explicitly say that the environmental living zone, if you do a translation, it, the rural living zone should not be applied to areas that also contains landscape values. So that's the challenge that we tried to highlight in the report. There's some inconsistencies. So the landscape conservation zone can be applied to residential areas that's got landscape values. However, the rural living zone could also be applied to residential areas, but it explicitly says that it can't be applied to areas that's got landscape values. And I guess that's the challenge.
Yeah. And there's the rub about the, how subjective that concept of landscape values are. I look at rural living, they have wonderful landscape values to me and to everyone else. Why, given how unpopular, and we knew, we've known for ages that the LCZ is so unpopular. We've known for at least as long as I, before I'd been on council. Why wouldn't we have gone to something that is like rural living? And then let the TPC say no, rather than us pushing people into a restrictive zone? Why wouldn't we just throw it back at the TPC and say, this is the zone we want to have? We believe that it captures, because I don't believe the rural living zone destroys landscape values. I believe it captures and creates them all on their own. But given how unpopular the LCZ is, why haven't we done that and can we do that?
Mr. Standor. Oh, sorry, Miss Tallemore.
Through you, mayor, it's not, we don't make decisions on popularity. We need to make decisions within the guidelines that are provided to us. Because if we made the wrong decision against the guidelines, we simply just wouldn't get anything through. And we wouldn't have got through to be able to do the exhibition. Because the TPC considered what was put before them to see, did it meet the guidelines by following the processes and using the methodology that's provided to us to do that. So the, to just convert it to rural living has other implications on the character and the nature of those areas and those communities. It's not as, it's, it's obviously more than a name. It's about the actual controls that are in there. What might change in your street? Going from 10 properties may go all the way up to 25 properties because of subdivision potential in it. The changes to that, how close they can build to your boundary, what commercial uses they can now introduce on your, your boundary. Those sorts of things. So it's, it's much more than just the name. It's about the, the different types of uses and development. And the landscape of rural living, absolutely rural communities, rural landscape is a beautiful landscape. And we're fortunate to have a mix of what I would describe as bush living, which is probably where the PPZ and the LCZ potentially sits in, and those more rural areas that have got cleared areas, different lands, different landscape and perspective. And it's great to have that combination of different communities and landscapes within our municipality. And we're fortunate to have that. So they have different purposes, different roles, but we do need to actually follow the rules that are given to us. That's our obligation under the Act.
Thank you. Given how subjective it is sometimes in interpreting these zones, I just don't understand. Because what we've done now is we've created a unique mechanism, which is not small, it's a large one. It's, I, I understand you said we, PPCs are done. One of the islands did it. It's a small area, we've done it for a road very close to where I live. But this is a sweeping change and I believe that the majority of people would rather be on the PPZ than the LCZ. But I have a hunch, 100% of them would rather be on the rural living. And what is stopping us from making a change or an amendment to the 35F, that 35F that acknowledges that and actually puts that to the vote tonight? So that the TPC can decide, no. Of these 1,750 properties that are now on rural living, these 100 have to go to LCZ?
Miss Tallemore.
Through you, mayor, I believe the question is, can we make the changes to properties sitting here tonight? It's up to the councillors, we wouldn't advise it. Picking it on without an assessment against the criteria, you can see the criteria listed that we have to pick, justify any of the changes too. So you could do that, but you're going to need to justify all of that. Pick those properties, decide which ones, consider whether you've consulted with anyone on that or not. And what, what impact that's going to have more generally on moving this forward? And is that the right outcome, are we the decision makers? Or does it need to go to the TPC to have the decision made, heard properly, where there's better jurisdictional control over that and more fairness to the community that should be able to speak to that?
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you. I think we're at risk because what we've done, from what I can see, is that we have done a translation of ELZ to LCZ, which the guidelines prohibit us from doing. And now that we've discovered that the.
Sorry, can I just, sorry, I'll stop you councillor Antaly. I appreciate that people in the public gallery tonight are very passionate about this, but it is going to disrupt our proceedings if you try to interject or applaud. I'd ask everyone to sit in silence, please, to listen to the discussion. That would be appreciated. Thank you, councillor Antaly.
Thank you, mayor. My concern is also the risk that we have with the TPC, that they will wake up to this or be aware of this, be woke to this, if I can use it in its proper context. That we have done a translation to, from ELZ to LCZ for many, many properties. And now we're proposing to shoehorn them out of it into a new PPZ, when I have a hunch that this could have all been solved by just pushing the majority of the 1,750 properties, whatever the final figure was, I don't know, it's gone up and down a bit, into rural living and let's see what the TPC makes of that.
Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor. I do understand where you're coming from. So I think the way I want to put it, the commission's already done an assessment. The commission, after we lodged the 2019 draft LPS, the commission's done an assessment and the document that was exhibited was the commission's direction. So they already had a good grasp of what council's proposing. And they obviously wouldn't have asked council to proceed with exhibition if they weren't comfortable with that approach. We did note in the LPS supporting document that went out on exhibition that we understand there's concerns about the new zone. And we would like to get feedback from the community on that to provide further recommendations to the commission. And that's what we're doing in this report. We've been quite honest and said, we understand these concerns about the landscape conservation zone. What we did, and we didn't have to do this, is to go a little bit further than that and also put a third option on the table, which I think it's most probably appropriate to have a third option on the table. Just in a, I guess to give the commission a third option, provides a mechanism to deal with areas that don't fit into either zones. So it's really up to the commission. I think it would be problematic for council at this stage just to do a blanket to the rural living zone. I think what we potentially would prefer to do, and that's the way the report is written, is to suggest that we have those discussions with the commission, understand clearly what the issues are about the landscape conservation zone, but also to understand the implications if we apply the rural living zone more broadly. And it could be very well that we do apply the rural living zone more broadly. I think this report acknowledged that, that there's further scope to refine this. The challenge obviously is that the guidelines is inconsistent. And it makes it very difficult from officer level to put something different up at this stage.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you, mayor. So you're saying that the, that's interesting, you talked about the, a moment ago that, so if, if the TPC had a problem with a translation, they would have pinged us back then and they haven't. Is that what you're saying?
It is correct, but I think they also noted that they would like to get public input on that. So they did acknowledge that further refinements could be done, but they needed to go through the exhibition process. And if you remember, that was the urgency of the exhibition last year, where the commission said, we've done our assessment, we got to a point where we actually need to understand what the community thinks about the zoning. And they've indicated, which we've put on our report, that further refinements can be made.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you. There's been a lot of talk tonight about the TPC will be making the final decision. My personal view is that the majority of the councillors in Huon Valley council that I've spoken to, a lot of representatives from the Huon Valley, and also the, a couple of councils on the North West, is that the representatives have been overwhelmingly disappointed by the TPC's decisions. Because in the end, it went with the Planning Authority's 35F report. And my concern is that there's a little bit too much talk around this table about, let's just note it and let the TPC sort it out and worry about it. But we are the final arbitrators and we need to be making the representation process for our community as easy as possible, rather than lumping them into it. So I don't really, I have to sort of counter that, that concern there. My understanding from talking to people of the TPC's change has shown a reluctance to make large changes. I've spoken to people that talked about how the biodiversity offset policy at the hearings, they didn't even want to touch it or consider the content of it with people's representations. Can someone comment on that, having gone, having maybe seen some of these hearings or heard about it? Because I'm just concerned that they will just, too much hold us, bow us, go with the 35F report and just lock people into LCZ.
Miss Tallemore.
Through you, mayor. It sounds councillor Antaly has spoken to people, got opinions and from the TPC. We don't have any comments on those, we weren't involved in them. We weren't part of those, we haven't had those discussions. So it sounds like you've got the information yourself directly and.
Sorry, no, I think you're misunderstanding the question. I think what councillor Antaly was asking was, have you sat in on any of the other hearings that have taken place? And can you, are you aware that the TPC has been reluctant to make large changes? Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's exactly the rub, yeah, thanks.
Through you, mayor, yes, we have attended other hearings. This is my opinion that I saw that they didn't, that wasn't presented at the hearings that we saw. We didn't see the correlating final decision with those.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you, mayor. With regards to the 35G statement, on page 27 of attachment one, it's been discussed, but it hasn't gone into a level of detail that it should. It's the concept that we are asking for clarity on the discretionary use component of the LCZ. And I don't mean to pick on whoever wrote it, please forgive me, but it's the grammar and the, and the writing is very confusing. It actually says, please consider amending the objective of this clause to requirement discretionary uses to provide for the protection, conservation and management of landscape values and amending the performance solution to include a requirement that discretionary uses further the zone purpose and clause objective, full stop.
Sorry, can you give me the page number again?
Yes. If you go to the 35G statement, it's on page 27 of the PDF.
Thank you.
It is number 22, landscape conservation zone. Halfway down, it talks about discretionary uses. It's a little box.
Yep, thank you.
And to go on further, in the absence of this amendment, there is no mechanism for the zone purpose to be fully realised. I found that really confusing. I had to put that through AI to work out what I was missing and then I had to ask some people. So is this or is this not a request to make discretionary use more restrictive? And why or why not?
Mr. Standor.
I'm going to try and simplify it. So under clause 22.3.3 of the landscape conservation zone, and that clause applies to when somebody wants to apply it for discretionary use. It indicates that when considering that use, you must consider the location and the scale and the extent of the use and having regard to landscape values. Then that same provision actually pops up in the performance criteria. So the question is, what are you actually trying to do? It, it kind of indicates that you want to protect the landscape values, but it's not clearly enough. So what council officers put forward in the report was, we need some clarification, what are you talking about? And I personally had conversations with consultants elsewhere in the state that's dealing with the landscape conservation zone. And they've indicated that's one of the obstacles that they deal with as planning consultants. Because how do you actually determine landscape values? And so our request is to the commission, clarify that, tie it up. We've made a few suggestions, we're not really particularly hard on what those changes would be, but we would like to see some clarification, what is meant by that. So that was the intent. I agree with you, the wording is clumsy in that representation, but that's the intent.
If we're going to submit this report, can we fix the wording so it is not clumsy? And just, just fix it up. So it's, it's got, for example, the use of the word requirement discretionary and that's not even grammatically correct. And it's, and this is part of the reason why it's created confusion. It actually looks like to the community, we are wanting the TPC to change discretionary to something more restrictive. So it's created a false, look, it's created a fear. I'm not going to say it's false or not false, because on, if I read that, I'd have a legitimate fear. But it's created a fear nonetheless, that we are moving the TPC in a request to make it restrictive. Therefore, of the people that aren't fortunate to move to KPZ, they will be left in an LCZ that is more restrictive than is current. Which is, you're telling me not the intention, but it's created that fear. So what can, what assurance can you give us on how do we handle that disconnect in the community?
Mr. Standor.
I guess there's two answers to that question. So the 35G report, it will be a different process. So if that is submitted to the commission, they want to take a review of that. They will actually look at, you know, is council right? Do we actually need to clarify this clause, yes or no? And then it will have to, if there's intent to change it, it will have to go through a whole process where it's being assessed and then advertised across the state. Given the expertise on the commission and in the state planning office, I think if the wording is not right, they will pick it up. I guess the other part of the answer is, if council is concerned about that specific element in the 35F report, the report is a 35G report. The, the recommendation tonight is to note to the report. It gives the general manager, the delegation to make a small tweak to that report. My suggestion would be that we actually explain that in the cover letter to the commission. So any changes or errors that we pick up, that we actually explain that in a letter as we submitted to the commission. So that might alleviate some of those concerns. But I, I guess if I go back to the first answer that I gave is, it will go through a formal process anyhow. No matter what council suggests, the commission will actually look at those provisions. Is it workable? Does it work in other states, other areas of the state? And do we need to tweak it? So it's, it's not all dependent on council's recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Antaly, I know you've probably got a few more questions. Councillor Antaly, I know you've probably got a few more questions. I'm just conscious of the fact that we haven't had a comfort break. If you're, you've still got quite a few questions, I assume, yeah? So I'm going to propose that we actually have a 10 minute break, just so that we can refill our water bottles and just give the staff just a quick break. So if we could be back in here, we will stop the recording very shortly. So for those people who are watching at home, we're just going to have a 10 minute break and we will be back online at 10 past eight. So if everyone could be back in here promptly at 8.08, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're right, got everybody that we need. We're right, Sam?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Order. Thank you. Thank you very much for your patience while we just needed to have a bit of a comfort break. We will resume the meeting. Recording has been confirmed as being back on, as is the acting CEO. So we're back to councillor Antaly.
Thank you, mayor. Just further with regards to the LCZ and what we can do between now and the 23rd of July, which is, what, two days away. So my understanding is that we have a deadline of the 23rd of July to lodge our 35F. Is that correct?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor. Yes, that's correct.
What, this is hypothetical, I'm not threatening to shoot this gun, just wanted to like to know. What happens if we don't lodge it by Wednesday? Do, does that trigger the TPC taking charge of the process? What does it mean?
Ms. Talamore.
Through you, mayor. There's nothing stipulated in the Act about what the outcome of that is. But yes, it would open up. Well, the 35T is available to them at any time, which is when they would take over. If they choose to take over. But it's not stipulated about what happens if we don't meet that 23rd.
T for takeover. Is that how we, that's a good mnemonic.
Councillor Antaly.
Yeah, thank you. So you're saying that it could trigger the 35T?
Through you, mayor. The 35T is available at any point. So it doesn't specify. So in other parts of the Act, it says, if you fail to do this, a blah 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 can be launched. Or it's got processes, they failed to write anything to that effect.
What I'm trying to do for us tonight is to, thank you, mayor. What I'm trying to do tonight for us is to try, and rather than naval gaze about the past, which won't actually solve anything, it just wastes time between now and Wednesday, to try and work on a possible solution going forward that helps us to get there by the 23rd and make as many people in our community as happy as possible. I know we don't do these things for popularity reasons, but as a planning authority and as an elected councillor, it's, it's the height of wisdom to take people's personal feelings and personal circumstances into account because we affect their daily lives more than any other level of government. And so it's really important for us to try and get this right. If I wanted, I was speaking to someone tonight that has gone through a whole lot of trouble to build a property in a part of Margate that was LCZ. He is now rural living. That has unlocked opportunity for him that wasn't there before. So what we decide on zoning is so important to people's capacity to build wealth. And building your home is the number one wealth creation we all have in our lives. So this is a really big deal for so many people. My concern is, we have proposed the KBZ. I like it over the LCZ. We don't know if it's going to be accepted. What happens to people that are stuck in the LCZ, as is now? If they say no? What flexibility do we have to rezone them to rural living? To get them out of the LCZ hole, in their view?
Ms. Talamore or Mr. Standor? Looks like it's Mr. Standor.
Thank you, mayor. Look, I think the report is structured in such a way that we, we acknowledge that there's some areas that's left in the landscape conservation zone. The approach that the report is taking is say, let's work through those issues. Let's understand what those issues are. Because I have to be honest, a lot of people made submissions. They highlighted some concerns which I think we can address in, in the hearings. But regardless, the report is also saying, we are actually open to changing it in some areas, noting that it still needs to comply with the commission's guidelines and the policies and so forth. So I think it's quite difficult for me at officer level to say to you, yeah, let's just change the zoning now. I think our approach, or preferences, let's leave it for the hearings and let the commission actually decide whether landscape is appropriate in all those areas or whether there could be further tweaks to that zoning or broader application of the rural living zone.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you, mayor. What, pardon me, what powers or freedoms do we as a council have? If the TPC finishes all the hearings, leaves certain people as LCZ, but they then find out they are LCZ, currently maybe unaware, currently haven't put a representation, so it won't be the hearings. What freedom do we have to work with those people and say, we can now move you out of LCZ, you have a case to make with us, let's move you to this? Maybe the, the KBZ, if they approve it, or to rural living? Or are they just stuck in it and then they just have no arbitration with us?
Mr. Snow, Ms. Talamore.
Through you, mayor. Once the LPZ, LPS has been approved, that's the scheme in place. If people want to rezone after that, they'll need to make a rezoning application for their property.
And that goes to the TPC for them to decide?
Correct. But it is not the same process as this. This is a different process. They need to do it as we do with other rezoning applications, as this chamber has done in recent times. The applications and supporting reports and the like need to go with it.
Yeah, so it's actually more costly, even more onerous?
Correct.
Yeah. Lot at stake. So we, we are in a situation where we, frankly, I would like to make it as easy as possible to get people who are currently in LCZ out of it if they want, into something that is still acceptable. The only mechanism I can think of right now is that we move in this report all of those people into the proposed new zone and let the TPC sift it through. Or we make a decision to move them all into rural living or a mixture of both, here and now, which is, I don't think the most evidence way, evidence-based way to handle it. Or we knock back the report and let it go to 35T and then anything can happen. And I have a hunch it won't happen in the favour of the majority of our residents.
So I'm going to make the assumption before I go to our staff that we can't move everyone that's currently in the LCZ to a zone that currently doesn't exist.
Can we propose it? Because we are proposing to move the majority of them to it.
Mr. Standor.
Thank you. It would be unusual to do that because the new zone comes with a justification that actually clarifies why we're proposing the zoning and also clarify the particular areas that we propose. So for instance, I'll make it simple. It is focusing on areas with lots of 10 hectares and smaller. I guess if we propose to apply it more broadly in this report, the justification won't make sense. So that potentially could have the opposite effect where the commission say, sorry, your justification and zoning that you propose is not consistent. So, but to help you, I'll give you some guidance. We did acknowledge in the report that the PPZ couldn't be applied more broadly. We just don't know what areas and we want to test that with the commission. But I understand where you're coming from. It's just, I don't think from officer level we can recommend anything other than what's in the report at the moment.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you. I know our back is to the wall on the timing. There are people suspicious out there, I don't agree with them, but they are suspicious out there that this was done intentionally to force council to approve and note and just approve the report and push it forward. They don't understand what's been going on. It's actually, it's not that way at all. But my concern, my fear is if this report is knocked back, as many people would like me to do, because they're not happy with being captured in LCZ, they want the whole thing reworked. They want to be put out of LCZ completely into something else more favourable. My fear is we won't be able to do that, won't have the time to do that. A 35T will be actioned, the could be actioned. The TPC will take charge, rip the whole process out of our hands, could reshape it in a way and a fashion that they and we don't like, don't want and can't change. So I'm trying to work out a way that doesn't break the process, keeps the timing on track, but makes the majority of our people happy. And I'd love to get some thoughts. Does anyone have any, any officers have any thoughts on how we might be able to do that? Instead of hoping the KBZ, KBZ is the solution.
Ms. Talamore.
I just want to add one thought for consideration. If the councillors were of a mind to go and change all LCZs to the PPZ, not all the submissions have been put in by the people from those properties. We have a submission from, from outside the municipality that did so against properties that they did not speak to the owners of. And in fact, a lot of those owners wouldn't even know that a representation has done that or that that was to occur. So I, I fear it would be quite unjust and unfair to just go and change anyone that appeared in an LCZ representation to become something else. Also, people didn't have an opportunity to put a representation in against the rural living or the other zones that may be proposed. That's a risk that you're going to have that effectively something's getting changed tonight and they've had no consideration of that at all. Or they've missed out putting the representation at all and they're not part of the proceedings.
Councillor Antaly.
Yeah, I don't, it's interesting and I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't seem to be a, a, a solution for now. I might just move on with other questions because there are others obviously that want to ask questions. There's been a concern about, in the S35 report on page 30, there is talk about the rural living zone in, in application to the Slatterys Road, Colbara Road, Hickman's, plural, Hickman's Road area. I've had representation, I've had calls, as I believe staff have, that a number of people that live there, they're noting that our rural living zone A is not an option for them and that we are recommending B and C instead, even though by the facts they are under A. How can we rectify that here and now?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor. I'm aware of those concerns. The report once again is referring to the guidelines, what we can achieve. I think one of the key challenges that we have in the translation process is that the state government is quite clear that when you do the zoning translations, it's not intended to, I guess, change the strategic direction. However, what council's done in this particular case is we had a look at the rural living zone throughout the municipality where we got representations and we did consider maybe allocating a different subcategory. And in some of those areas where we've, we've indicated that we can be a little bit more consistent, it will create some opportunities for people. Now, the properties that you're referring to, it's a quite challenging area because if you have a look at what is under the existing planning scheme and also what was exhibited, there's some key changes. And I think what council is trying to do in this area is to be open-minded. What we've recommended in the report is that we, at this point in time, happy to look at the application of the rural living B or C because that would align with the commission's guidelines. However, we're happy to explore other options, which includes the rural living A and which we did do further down south from that area. However, I guess we have to test it with the commission if they're willing to go beyond the guidelines to make those changes. So from a council officer point of view, it would be quite risky to put that in the report. And the way the commentary is provided in the report is, yes, we're open to make some changes, but we actually need to look at those properties. And it, just to simplify it, I think we have to look at what's under the Kimberley interim planning scheme. What is the potential? What does the guidelines say? Can we change it? Can we change it now? Or is that something that landowners need to pursue through a separate planning scheme in future? Which obviously comes with a cost implication. But the report is quite open to say, let's talk about it, let's work through the properties. And there must be a lot of question that council's got for those landowners too. And that's reason why we've taken a bit of a conservative approach in that location. In other areas, we've been a little bit more, excuse me, a little bit more flexible. Like for instance, down at Woodbridge, we, you know, we looked at the area. There's not a lot of constraints on those properties and therefore we went with the rural living A, which is going to increase the subdivision potential. So we could take a similar approach in this particular area, but it is something that needs to be discussed with those relevant landowners.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you. How can that be done? Because if we're doing it through the hearings and the TPC's decision is final, how do we get, how do, how do you do this? I'm trying to understand. Have these discussions? In what format do you have these discussions with them? How does it work?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor. I think the, the way that the hearings will be set up is first of all, representatives have the opportunity to, to reiterate what they've provided to council and explain why they want to do that. Often the delegates at the hearings will ask for the questions to say, can you elaborate or can you explain this? And then they would use that opportunity to also ask council officers, you know. So what's councils, why did council put this in your 35F report? Why did council make a recommendation to be in C? Why can't it be A? And the, the recommendation in the report is kind of acknowledging that we don't have all the information that we need to go down to a recommendation of A, but we're quite open to discuss that at the hearings.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you. I have a question around the agricultural zone. It's discussed in the 35G. I'm not sure my notes are 100% correct on this. I believe it's page six, but what I, it's more around the issue. So the agriculture zone aims to protect agricultural land. Yet I read that there were restrictions proposed on some legitimate use. For example, if farming equipment is, is sitting as infrastructure on unproductive lands due to biodiversity concerns. The concern from the community was, there's this tussle in terms of whether or not it's agricultural land or whether or not it can be used, it has to be set aside as biodiversity and that farming equipment that sits on the biodiversity side is in violation of the, the zone's intent. Can, can anyone sort of unpick that for me, please?
Mr. Standor.
I don't understand the question 100%, but I'm going to try and answer it to my best ability. Look, I'm mostly just going to say what I've seen in the representations. A lot of people in their representations oppose the agriculture zone, given its restrictive nature and the intent of that zone is to protect agriculture practices. One of the challenges that we've got with that zone is that the state government's guidelines is essentially saying that you can't apply the priority vegetation overlay in the agricultural zone, which is a challenge, I guess, for council particularly on Bruny Island. And that's most probably one of the reasons the Bruny Island is being proposed, to try and address those issues. I guess from council officer's side, in the, it's worth noting that in 2019, council didn't actually propose the agricultural zone. This is a direction that came directly from the commission that asked council to apply the zone more broadly. It's safe to say that council officers don't necessarily agree with those recommendations and that's why the report is not saying that we propose anything else because we need to discuss it with the commission as well. So I, I think that is where it's coming from, but...
I think you're right, yes. The PVO, there's, there's a, there's a concern that the PVO actually, that the way we've written in the 35G that the PVO actually opposes their rights to use the agricultural land in that zone. Oh.
Yeah, no, it's on, but the light, ah, that's, ah.
Sorry, it's the little, the little foam thing just covered it all up.
They're called spit catchers, actually, strangely enough. Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor. Maybe it's a little bit late, but I think it's the opposite actually. So it's the, the agricultural zone, unless there's a SAP, won't have a priority vegetation. So it's quite the opposite side. So we've got representations on both sides. Some people indicated they've got a concern with that. If you look at Bruny Island, where the agricultural zone is being proposed, there's a concern from some residents that we're going to lose all the vegetation on Bruny Island because of that, because you can't apply it unless you have a SAP. But there's also other people that just got a concern with agricultural zone in general because it's got more restrictive requirements. I guess from a council officer's side, we have the rural zone as alternative. The rural zone also allow agricultural purposes. But once again, we have to be careful because the commission directed us to apply that agricultural zone. So it is really something that needs to be discussed with the commission. Council's quite open in the report that we are looking, we could potentially look at the rural zone in some of those areas. And on Bruny Island, it's slightly more complicated because we need to understand first of all, is the Bruny Island SAP supported? Because it could be that the commission decide not to proceed with that and then we need to decide what we do with underlying zoning. So the report states that if the agricultural zone or if the Bruny Island SAP on Bruny Island is not supported, council's position most probably would be to move away from the agricultural zone and as alternative apply the rural zone. But we can't make that recommendation until we've actually had the discussion with the commission.
Councillor Antaly.
I have a couple of more questions, but I think I might just hold them off right now because I'm just trying to work them out in my own head. My, my dilemma is that I am still not too sure what is the best way forward.
While you ponder that.
Sorry.
While you ponder that, just let that all sort of cogitate in your head and I'll give you some more information in relation to section 35T of LUPA. So that actually does say that if the commission takes over the responsibilities of the planning authority, one B says the planning authority must pay to the commission all costs incurred by the commission in assuming the responsibilities and obligations of the planning authority under this part, which refers to the LPS. So in the event that we are unable to meet our obligations by Wednesday in referring this all back, that is a very costly exercise that we would be footing the bill for. So.
Yes, I read that once.
I know that doesn't move us forward, but I'm just letting you know what is in the Act.
Yes, and the counter is how costly is it for the individuals out there? For if they're pushed into a zone they don't want, that could affect their lives. But then again, my feeling is they're not going to get what they want from the TPC nearly as much as probably negotiating it this way. I might just, I might just hand over.
You ponder that and I'll see if there's anybody else who would like to ask some further questions. Or we've still got some people who haven't contributed on the substantive. Don't feel any pressure, but if you want to, because I've only got, according to my notes, councillor Street, councillor Dean and councillor Cordero, who have actually made these substantive contributions. And where, I said you, yeah, yourself, councillor Cordero and councillor Street. Others have asked questions, but if you did want to make substantive contributions, then please feel free to do that at any moment. Councillor Dean.
I'll just jump in for a question. Look, one of the things, just moving separately sideways from the LCZ issue for a moment, one of the themes I got out of the reports was around growth. Clearly, there's aspects which people would like to subdivide, but there's also been a bunch of submissions about increasing density. From what I can see in the report, there's a lot of commentary around, oh, look, strategic planning needs to happen, for that to be fully considered. I'd really like for that strategic plan to happen. So my question will, will be basically, what, what do we envisage that is going to look like? Because there's clearly pockets in the community where there is capacity to grow, where it's closer to CBD. And then one other specific question that's a broad one was just about the future urban zone. So I know on the 29 LPS draft, there was a section about 45 Snug Tears Road, which had, which was earmarked for future urban growth. And then the commentary here is that we couldn't really consider, consider it because it wasn't inside the urban growth boundary. So can I just clarify that? And whether that zone, I mean, what is the point of that zone? I guess, so I'm trying to figure out, what is the point of the future urban zone if you can't kind of look towards the future for urban growth, unless it's inside the, the boundary? Or the growth boundary, sorry.
Mr. Standor.
Through you, mayor. I'll ask the first part of the question first. So yes, we, even though the state government specifically asked us not to try and use this report to do some strategic changes, I think it's fair to say that we've got a lot of representations about people that want to subdivide in the rural living zone. So then the question comes, but where's the most appropriate place to do that? And also, we have to be slightly cautious because Kingston is growing, Margate is growing. So sometimes if you apply a zone like the rural living zone, you might potentially shoot yourself in the foot where we, you could have gone to a higher order zoning like general residential or low density. The challenge that we have, and it's not unique to Kimberley, it's across the state, is that where we can allow growth to happen is not dictated by council. It is the state government through the regional land use strategies. So in the report, you'll note that there are some areas where council identified on, you know, close to Kingston, for instance, where we say, look, we potentially could look at a, a change in the rural living zone, but we have to be cautious because this potentially could be a future growth area for, for Kingston. So to answer your question, what would that look like? I think the starting point would be to have the discussions with the state government because we're dealing with urban growth boundary. It's not something that council can just change. There are different ways to go about it. But I think the more important part is, and, and from memory, we did put it in a report, perhaps in those areas, we actually need a discussion with the community. Because a lot of people, and it's just from experience from other states too, a lot of people buy into certain areas because they like the lifestyle, they don't necessarily want to see a lot of subdivision happening around them. But also, some people buy with the intention to subdivide. It's their retirement fund. So the starting point will most probably be having a discussion with communities in those areas. What do you think about the future of your neighbourhood in future? Do you see there's a potential for urban growth? What could that look like? And then also at the same time, have a discussion with the state government. The, and I'm going to try and not make this very technical, but to change the urban growth boundary is not an easy process. It needs to undertake modelling on a state level, southern, southern part of the state, looking at demand and supply. It's not necessarily looking at where growth in Kimberley can happen. It's looking at where growth can happen in the southern region. So we, we're currently busy with that process. There, there will be some growth steered to places like... There will be some growth steered to places like Clarence, Brighton, and a little bit to Kimbra as well at the moment. We've got some areas identified down at Margate. What we're saying is, in the report, give us a little bit more time to work through these issues. I think it would be inappropriate for council just to propose a zoning at this where there's actually opportunity to actually increase the densities even more. So some of those landowners, you might get two lots now, but essentially, if we do the strategic work, you might be able to get more lots. But I guess from a strategic point, I'm trying to think about housing in general. It's not necessarily what a particular landowner can get on their property, but also how do we actually accommodate our growing community? So that's the first part of the question. I guess the future urban zone, your question is actually very appropriate because I'm struggling to understand the purpose of the future urban zone if you can't apply it to your area outside the urban growth boundary. I guess it's fair to say that we in the commission mostly have two different opinions on that. The commission's in their advice to council before was quite adamant that that zone is not intended to be applied to areas outside the urban growth boundary. I suspect the zone is where you've got areas inside the urban growth boundary where you don't necessarily have a specific zone that you want to apply, general residential or commercial or low density, where it requires a little bit more strategic work where you can actually apply it. So that's their approach, it's their guidelines, and unfortunately, I can't give you more advice on that because, for instance, Margate, we would have liked to see the urban growth boundary being allocated outside that, the area to the south of Margate, outside the urban growth boundary.
Thank you. Councillor Richardson.
Thank you. Look, this is a highly complicated and complex topic that we've all struggled to get our heads around. And from a worldview, point of view, I don't like the idea of having restrictions on my land, on my property, but I'm also barely intelligent enough to understand that that is necessary for us to function as a society. However, I would hope that we'd be approaching this from the point of view of applying the minimum possible restrictions that are practical for us to be able to function in the here. I worry that the approach that we've taken has been overly conservative, and we've heard, I think, hints of that over the course of this process, where we've talked about putting, as councillor Bay noted, large swathes of properties into LCZ, and then, under pressure, pulled that back, suggesting that the decision to put them in in the first place was probably the wrong decision. We've also heard that the commission makes the final decision, we're putting up our recommendation, and the commission will have the final say. And I'm uneasy about that. I think we should, I think the impetus is on us to work really hard to make sure that we are applying the minimum restrictions practical. Ms. Tyler Moore mentioned to councillor Antoli's question around the, what, mood or the trends that the commission have been handing down in their decisions. And I think she specifically said that the decisions for the matters or the hearings that she attended, she didn't hear the results of. So for my first question, I'd like to understand, from a trend point of view, with industry knowledge, no doubt talking to your colleagues and staying abreast of what is happening in this space, have the commission been actively reversing and making significant decisions and changing what has been put in front of them from the planning authorities?
Ms. Tyler Moore.
Through you, Mayor, I wouldn't be able to give a quantitative assessment of it because I haven't sat down and looked at all their really long reports as well and their outcomes. So I think it'd be difficult to say. Certainly, we have heard of examples from colleagues at other councils, I guess also it's in the media, and funnily enough, we do live in communities as well, that there were definitely changes made as a result of the hearings, that it didn't necessarily go with what was proposed. Now, whether that was specifically in the 35F report or not, I don't have the luxury of time to have read all those reports to look at a specific property and follow it through, but certainly there were, at the hearings, who went to, and I guess, only a few properties, and I don't think that's fair with however many properties there are in Tasmania, where the representatives were heard, and they did make changes, but I couldn't make a quantitative assessment of whether they were an exception, whether there were lots of them or not. I think it's important that we focus on our municipality, not just what everyone else does. I mean, that's sort of straying away from the question, I guess, about what the TPC outcomes were. I think it went both ways, but I couldn't give you a number or percentage or, because it's not something we've had the luxury of to be able to sit down and do.
Councillor Richardson.
So a couple of other points I just wanted to point out, I guess, and maybe discuss a little. There was another point made around the LCZ and the representations, pointing out their concerns, or not, not adequately pointing out the specific things that they were worried about. And from the conversations that I've had with people, the main concern seems to be the discretionary nature of the approval. And the concern with the discretionary nature of the approval is that there is a perception that if council is given a discretion, then it will fall in the negative. So, and I'm sure that's not lost on anybody here. So in terms of what is a concern, that is a big part of the concern. Mr. Standor mentioned that people didn't provide solutions in their representations. And I'd just like to unpack a little bit what that actually means and how a resident would provide solutions, given the difficulty that career planners have in navigating this system, particularly in our context.
Ms. Tyler Moore.
Through you, Mayor, just, I'll answer the first part of the question, which was about people's fear about discretionary applications. It's worth noting that probably over 90% of our applications, statutory applications that we deal with are discretionary. And yet, in the last two years maybe at least, there's only been one refusal. So the applications do get approved. So I think it's important to have regard to the outcomes of that and not make an assumption that if it's discretionary, that we will just choose to go and refuse applications. Obviously, they're assessed on their merits. There was a refusal only a few weeks ago, but that's the first for, I kind of remember when we did the refusal before that. So I think that's just important to keep on balance for residents. So when DA's come in, we need to assess it against the provisions of the scheme, which is not just the zone, it's the codes as well, and the other provisions of the planning scheme that we consider, which of course occurs now in the current scheme as well. And I think that's an indication of some of those outcomes. And I'll let Mr. Standor answer the second part of the question.
Mr. Standor.
Through you, Mayor. So my understanding is, the second question was about people's representations and the comment that I made earlier, that people didn't really provide solutions through that process. I think maybe I should just rectify something. A lot of people provided detailed representations, and particularly, some of those representations were made by consultants that really unpacked the zone and particularly some of the SAPs. I guess what I referred to was a lot of the representations, most probably the majority of it, indicated they opposed landscape conservation zone, they opposed specific area plans, and they didn't really explain in the representations the specific issues that they have. One of the things that we always try in discussions with people before even the exhibition period is to sit down with people and ask them, what is your specific issue with the zoning? Because it affects people differently. So for instance, some landowners that earmark to go to landscape conservation zone, they are just really interested in subdivision. For other people, it might be, I just want to know that I continue my business in that landscape conservation zone. And some other people, it might be, I've got a vacant block and I want to put a house on it, and I need some security at council when I put in an application for a house that will get approved. For the majority of the representations that were lodged on the landscape conservation zone, people didn't really unpack that. We tried to address some of those issues in the report. You'll note in that section that deals with landscape conservation zone, we provide a broad overview of the main concerns that people raised. So for instance, people would talk about, they're worried about the fact that if their house burns down in that zone, they won't be able to rebuild it and things like that. So we tried to demystify some of those issues in the report. Obviously, because there's such a range of issues, we can't address everything in the report. And once again, that's why we hoping that we can get to a situation where we sit down with those representatives at the commission. It also gives the commission the opportunity to listen to the representatives directly, and also to provide alternative solutions through that process. So, yeah, it comes down to the fact that we didn't have enough information in some of these areas just to make, I guess, a recommendation, and we felt it's more appropriate to leave it open-ended and refer to further discussions at the hearings.
Councillor Richardson.
Another thing that was mentioned throughout the conversation was some of the representations were requesting changes that we were open to. And then it was, and then it went on to, we went on to talk about, but we're going to wait until the hearings to make those changes. So if we're open to those changes and they're sensible and reasonable changes, why would we wait and make people go through the process of the hearings, which are time-consuming and costly, rather than make the changes?
Mr. Standor.
Through you, Mayor, I think it's in a specific relevant where there's multiple options that we need to discuss with landowners. So it might not be one solution to it, it could be multiple options that we need to discuss. And often, it is also put in that way because if somebody made a representation about their specific property, it's got flow-on effects what's happening in the area. So for instance, if council would, I'm going to use example, if this area in Kimbra where council say, okay, we are okay to move to rural living zone, we potentially could support it for that property, but we also need to look at the broader area. How does that zone interact, for instance, with the agricultural zone and so forth? So it actually requires that further discussion, and that's why it's actually quite dangerous to try and make recommendations in this report. We've tried our best really to try and address some of the representations and to make recommendations where we can, but we've highlighted in the beginning of the report, in the introduction, that regardless of the recommendations that we provide in the report, we actually need to discuss it with people to understand what we can do. There's multiple options to go forward in some areas. Some areas, it's actually quite straightforward. And the report is really trying to put the recommendations forward where we feel comfortable at this stage. We don't have to provide recommendations on any of the representations. The legislation allows us to provide recommendations, but it doesn't require you to provide a recommendation on each and every submission. So the way I read it is where council or the planning authority feel comfortable to make those recommendations at this stage, they can do so, noting that it still requires discussion at the hearings.
Councillor Richardson.
We also heard tonight that the 35G report is non, and correct me if any of this detail is incorrect, it's non-mandatory, it's not part of the other process, and it's non-binding. So in your opinion, what is the likelihood that the TPC or whoever it is will take up the suggestions made in the 35G report?
Ms. Tyler Moore.
Through you, Mayor. The, it's worth noting that the planning commissioner's, sorry, the State Planning Office, just separate to the planning commission, is currently undergoing the SPP reviews. So it's a requirement that once the parts of the Act were brought in, or once the SPPs were brought in, that it had to be reviewed within five years. Because it took so long to get there, that meant that it had to be reviewed before anyone had actually got onto the new scheme. So they've sort of started that process. I expect what will happen with the 35Gs that the councils have written, because we're not the only ones, they'll probably consider that as part of the SPP reviews. I mean, regardless, all the councils will be involved and have the opportunity to partake in the SPP reviews, and we've already started that in a couple of the working groups, and there is a bit of detail on the website, which we can share, on the SPO website, that explains some of that. So my thoughts are, it probably will just be rolled into that. It won't affect the LPS, it won't affect the current hearings because you send it to the minister rather than to the TPC, so it's a different process. Why they lumped them in together, not sure, maybe just because you're working on the new planning scheme? Maybe they thought that it was going to come in quicker than it did, but it's certainly there, it's a possibility to have it. If it didn't go through tonight, I don't see it as completely fatal because we'll be part of that SPP review process regardless. I suspect they're just holding off till everybody's on the new scheme.
Councillor Richardson.
Okay, so in light of that, and again, please correct my thinking, and so completely understandably, we are time-poor, resource-constrained, and we've produced a sizable report in the 35G that didn't necessarily need to be produced at the same time, at the very least. Would we not have been better off diverting time and resources from that into other more pressing matters? Or was it as important for us to get this done now?
Ms. Tyler Moore.
Through you, Mayor, much of the 35G report, which is nowhere near as long as the 35F report, or involves as much, work as the 35F report, much of that information was already on hand because there'd already been consideration and submissions about the SPPs. So it was really a matter of picking up some of that information and putting it in this report. It was the 35F that really took the time to consider those, to lay out the report, to go through every representation. I'd give a gold medal to any councillor who's read every single representation, given how many that there are. And gold medal to councillor Fox, she's nodding. Oh, and councillor Cordero. There are a lot of them, and then to sort them and try and find the most practical way to put it together in the report that made the most sense. Now, I appreciate members of the public will disagree, and we were never going to win the battle of pleasing everyone in how the report was laid out, but we really did try to sort of cluster it together to have an overall understanding of the impacts of the LCZ or the impacts of the agricultural zone, or the SAPs and things like that to make it readable. So then when it gets considered at the hearings, it's considered together. If we did it really piecemeal by just going representation one through to 200 and just have them separately, it's much harder to manage and deal with it. So that's where a lot of the time went into that.
Councillor Richardson.
Okay, thank you. That's, look, that's all my questions. I guess just in closing, I also want to thank everyone who's made a submission, all the people who've come in tonight and spoken. This is a big thing, it's a heavy thing for people who are not professionals, it's not their day job to get their head around. There's a heavy burden on the residents who are trying to, I'll use the word fight, for what they think is right and where they think their property should be zoned. I'll use the word fight, for what they think is right and where they think their property should be zoned. And I just want to acknowledge that, that it is a big process, it is a heavy burden. And going to the commission and sitting in those hearings for hours upon hours or days upon days and trying to put your case so that you can continue on your life in the way that you would like to do it is no small thing. So, yeah, this, look, as as a bunch of other people have said today, this weighs heavy on all of us councillors sitting here today on on how we actually move forward with this. So again, thanks to the public, thanks for the representatives and thanks for staff for all your work.
Thank you councillor Richardson. Councillor Street.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question arising out of, out of some of what we've heard since I gave my contribution. Can I get an assurance from staff, if an assurance is possible, I don't want to lock you into anything, but that if we get before the the planning commission and either the proposal for the PPZ is rejected or looks like it's not going to be adopted by the commission, that in then considering how specific properties and areas are zoned, we won't be slavishly adhering to the position that we have put in the 35F report? That we're going with an open mind as to all options?
Mr Standor.
It sounded like a difficult question, but it's actually simple. No, it's all options on the table.
Yep. So there's no, we're, we're not going to sit there and say, well, council's position in the 35F report was X and that's our position. No.
Mr Standor.
Through you, Mayor, I think the report is quite explicit in that where we say we, you know, this is a recommendation, it's a preliminary recommendation. The commission is not bound to follow that, neither is council. It's just our reading of the representations and some solutions that we can come up at this stage. Obviously during the hearing process, the commission might put alternative options on the table or landowners will do that too. The report actually acknowledged that we want to use the local knowledge of people. So I think there's going to be more than just one additional option. There might be multiple options on the table and it's really the commission's job to work through those options.
So it's not necessarily, sorry, Mayor. So it's not necessarily even the case that the the section 35F is the starting point where it it is, it is what it is. But if we get to that point where all options on the table, we're, we're looking at everything.
Through you, Mayor. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Street. I'm trying to work out how we move this forward. I guess my question is, how do we? How, would, would would the mechanism be in our covering letter, given where we are in the process with one and a half days to go before this is now due in? Is the mechanism a covering letter that goes with our submission to the TPC? Which highlights some of the concerns that have been expressed tonight, but also our commitment to wanting to work through this, as you said, with an open mind and try to come up with productive solutions so that it's clear that we're not trying to lock everyone in who currently sits in LCZ at the other end of the process. Because I think the last thing we want to do is then have the TPC say, oh no, we're, we're happy with how you've put those people in that group for LCZ. And they give it their stamp of approval and then it comes, and then their only option is, as we've already discussed, an expensive rezoning application later on. So is there a way of kind of working that through in a more, I know some of that is, you know, has been said tonight and some of it is sort of implied in the submission, but can we be more explicit about it in our covering letter?
Yes, we can absolutely put a cover letter that could summarize, be like another 35F. But of the comments of councillors at the council meeting, raising some of those concerns and and express some of those thoughts and approaches towards the towards the adopting of the or noting the report. By all means, we can, we can do that. And I think that's probably a pretty good way to go about it, actually. Because then it can be included, they can have consideration of it and hear it. I mean, certainly some of the comments and questions that have come from councillors tonight is because members of the public have gone to them directly and raised it. So it's definitely fair enough to be able to do that and and include that to the TPC as part of the submission. And and it'll be published as well.
Yeah. And I'm just wondering if we can add that in some way to the recommendation. Although it's a recommendation of noting, can it be?
I think we could have a letter C that says include a summary of the council meeting 21st of July of some of the concerns raised by councillors during discussion.
I won't ask you to draft that on the fly, but if you, I'll go to, I can see councillor Antaly wants to speak. So if you just give that some thought, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be appreciated. Councillor Antaly.
Thank you for your contribution, Mayor. I thought that was very good. And I agree with that. I've, I've two questions. One is about the 35T process. So I'm trying to understand this and also the the community needs to understand this. Obviously, it has a cost impost, it has a reputation impost. How does it work in terms of any, any different to the normal process? For example, in the 35T process, do hearings happen where they can converse with the planning staff and come to the same sorts of negotiations?
Ms Tullamore.
Through you, Mayor. We're not entirely clear on the process. We haven't asked those questions explicitly and the act is fairly silent tonight. I would have thought that it would still have the process that the representatives get to speak and then, so what actually happens in the hearings, the representative speaks. The TPC could ask a few questions. Do you mean this? Do you mean that? I want to understand this. And then they say, oh, so it could be changed to this. Counsel, what's your opinion on that? And then we speak to an opinion or we may not have the answer, have to go and do some research or whatever the case might be. I would be really surprised if they didn't follow that same process.
So it's not like they get robbed of due process in the 35T?
The residents?
The, the, the landowners and stuff, yeah. No.
Through you, Mayor, no, I wouldn't think so.
Councillor Antaly.
But to, just to clarify, we don't actually explicitly know. It hasn't occurred. We haven't been advised. I don't know that there is a direction note on it or anything like that.
Right.
I'm just making the assumption that that's what they would still do.
Thank you. And with the hearings.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, with the hearings, do, they're going to be all over the place, all through our local government area. Do the TPC come to every hearing or members of the TPC to those locations and and rather than everyone going into some grand office in the city? Is that how it works?
Ms Tullamore.
Through you, Mayor. Just to clarify, they're not going to go all over the municipality.
Yep.
They're proposing to go to the hub in Kingston.
Yep.
And they're proposing to have someone on Briny Island.
Yep.
And then the rest will be at their offices in the city.
I see, okay.
So it's only those places. And yes, the panel, the delegates, they're called. So there's three delegates that we will have. They will sit there and then they also have the support of administration staff and the planning advisers. So they have quite a lot of people with them and they will be at every hearing, plus every hearing is recorded.
Yep. And and just a question regarding experiences that, so I just got feedback from the Huen that a lot of people, and I don't know why this happened, a lot of people found the outcome of the hearings disappointing. My reading of their F35 report was, after they sent it, they regretted it because it lacked a certain amount of flexibility that has been clearly written into this report. Is that your recollection?
Ms Tullamore.
Sorry, through you, Mayor. I would, Adrian, Mr Standor will be able to answer more about the outcomes for that, but I think that a pointed difference with our 35F and others as we've communicated tonight is that we have a lot of flexibility in there and say, we actually want to hear more. We don't, because some of the representations didn't contain enough information, and that's not their fault about, you know, what, what is it? What is it that you actually don't like about the LCZ to understand it? That's where it's important to have the, this two-part process, you've written and then your verbal discussion as well. So the level of dissatisfaction at Huen Valley, again, don't have a quantitative knowledge on that. And I don't know if Mr Standor's got anything different, but perhaps their report was written with less flexibility. Maybe the expectations were set up with the community differently. There could be a whole lot of factors on that. And how many of those people, what proportion actually were really dissatisfied? Was it a lot? Was it most? Yeah, I think you need to have a quantitative look at what the outcome was.
Thank you.
Councillor Antaly.
Yeah, I'm getting actually, I think, close to a contribution ready for a vote. So that's been, this has been very helpful. So you've given us a concession through councillor Streets, or not a concession, you've sort of clarified that if the KBZ is knocked back, that there is huge appetite from the council to look at a alternative, less restrictive option where at all possible, right? And as I, and that's, have I got that clear?
Mr Standor.
Through you, Mayor, yes, correct, I guess, with the provision. Obviously, it needs to comply with the state government's guidelines and this is a process that's governed by the commission. So yes, we're open to to look at all options.
Yep.
Whether we've put it in a report or options being discussed at the area.
Yep. And and I note that the, our 35F appears to be far more options-focused than other councils may have put in, which I find very comforting. And I don't want to go back about what could have done better because that will not help fix things yet. That won't fix things between now and Wednesday, but the, the clock is ticking. In the hearings, you've got yourself, yourselves, there'll be multiple of yourselves, you've got the TPC delegates and you've got the representative. They will plead their case. And is it fair to say that then and there you could apply that flexibility to their case, say yes to the delegates, we agree with them, yes, we think that they should move out of LCZ to rural living or to the new zone? And can that sort of be done then and there? Or is it done cold after the fact later through some sort of documentation process? No correspondence can be entered into.
Ms Tullamore.
Through you, Mayor, it'll, it's likely to be a mix. Certainly, on the first part of the question, can we say, oh yes, that sounds like the right idea? Yes, we can. They, the TPC delegates will still need to go and make, make their decision.
Right.
I, I would doubt that they just stamp, yes, you've got that now. Because it needs to be considered together. That's what we didn't anticipate, but certainly we can indicate our position on those. Some of those we may need to go away and look at in more detail. It would, it would not be fair on the residents to just make up the answers sitting there. We may need to look at the site, the sites or the areas that it affects.
And if we were to follow the, if we were to be plunged into a 35T process, is it fair to say that a lot of the flexibility that we probably can apply now might be robbed from us?
Ms Tullamore.
Through you, Mayor, as I indicated before, we don't really know that much about the 35T process. Again, I, I doubt that they would not allow us freedom of discussion and opinion as professionals in the field. And also having the knowledge of the municipality quite well.
Okay.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you. You've mentioned the 35G, you've discussed that with councillor Richardson earlier. It doesn't form part of the LPS. It goes to the minister, is that right? Is, and is it almost like an education document to them to say, here's some feedback from us planners about how you guys can do things better? Is that sort of a summary?
Ms Tullamore.
That is only summary. I don't know that that was their intent. It is intended to raise things that don't work. And and certainly there are a number of councils who are on the LPS, of the, sorry, it's getting late, on the TPS that have noted a lot of issues with the new provisions of the scheme, bits that don't work, words that are missing, things like that. So there are quite a lot, but that's sort of feeding into that SPP review, which we'll also consider the 35G.
Okay.
Councillor Antaly.
Thank you, Mayor. I think without anything, without a bombshell coming out in terms of any more questions, I I suppose we're, we're faced with a position where knocking back this 35F report is more dangerous by far than accepting it. There are so many unknowns as to how it will be handled. And I'm convinced that we have worded enough goodwill. And I know, having had private conversations with some of the key staff that will be doing those negotiations, that goodwill is very sincere. There's enough flexibility, goodwill, understanding to move as many people out of LCZ that are not happy with it as is legally possible. Especially if we get a, especially if we get the KBZ through. So at this stage, I feel that I will be voting, I know, under some reluctance for the 35F. And I'm comforted that the 35G is not in a sense, retroactive or retrospective on the 35F. It's not like it'll be adopted and then it'll change everyone on the LCZ, that sort of a thing. So at this stage, I'm happy to vote for both. Unless otherwise, I suppose, convinced with further questioning.
Thank you councillor Antaly. I'm just, we do need to get some words. I think we've kind of, I'm getting a sense that we've covered the issues and we now need to get a set of words to add to C to provide the intent of what we've discussed about trying to, I guess, make it clear to the TPC that we're not, we don't want to lock in, we want still some flexibility. We don't want to be just immediately locking in the LCZ. So we might, we, look, unless anyone's got anything else that they'd like to contribute, we can have a five-minute break just to get those words right. I don't want to draw this out longer than necessary, but I think it's really important we get this part of it correct. So if you can just bear with us, we'll just take a five-minute break. Apologies to those people at home who are listening along, but we just want to make sure we get this correct. So we'll be back in five minutes at four minutes, twenty past nine. Thank you. And are we right back on?
Yes.
Thank you. Apologies to those who are watching along at home, we just needed to finesse some words. So on the screen now, we have a new C as part of the recommendation. So we have the original two, and then uh the third one, which says, a summary of the matters and issues discussed by elected members at council meeting on twenty one July twenty twenty five accompany the reports submitted to the TPC. The summary would also reiterate council's position regarding an openness to consider all options presented at hearings for workable solutions. I'll just let that digest with all of you and ask for any comment on those words. Thank you. I, it's so late, I had forgot to ask that. So councillor Courtover as the mover has indicated that he is happy with that. Councillor Fox as the seconder, are you happy with that amendment?
I'm happy, but I'm just concerned about the the precision of the last sentence. The summary would also reiterate council's position regarding an openness to consider all options presented at hearings for workable solutions. Um, there's sort of a lot of, what are we actually open to consider?
All options.
Or workable solutions? Right, okay. Yeah, it's a bit of a long sentence.
It is a long sentence, and it's
But it is, unless you can improve on it. I can't.
Look, I'm, I'm normally good at wordsmithing, not at this hour. Yeah, they were my last three words, but that's okay. I'm happy, I'm happy to remove those. I was trying to make it a bit more positive about our workable solutions, but that's okay. I don't think any less of you for suggesting that. All options for workables. Okay, let's change the order of words then. All options for workable solutions presented at hearings. Full stop. Thank you, Mrs. Morton. Uh, okay. I'm in your hands as to where we go from here. I can see some pained expressions. Uh, does anyone have any further questions that they would like to ask? Are there any further contributions that anybody would like to make? I will just make a really brief one before we continue, and then I will ask councillor Courtover if he would like to summarise. Um, look, I just wanted to reiterate some of the points that others have already made, and I know it's late, and so I don't want to go take up too much time, but I did want to acknowledge the huge body of work that this has been uh for our staff and the manner in which they have gone about doing that under extreme pressure. Um, and I thank them for the work that they've done. I'd also thank all the members of the community who have engaged with this, with us on this uh process. It's been quite a journey that we've been on over five years now, six, nearly six years, I think. Um, and we've certainly uh appreciated um the engagement by the community on this. We know, as others have said, that this is an important issue for many uh property owners in in Kingborough. And it hasn't been, as we can hear tonight, it hasn't been an easy, easy one uh to work through. And I think probably one of the biggest challenges that I know that I've had ever since I first became a councillor um way too many years ago now, is that the complexity of the planning scheme that uh is not a creature of council, but a creature of the state government. It is complex, and this is the, this is the simplified version that we're moving to. This is the Tas, statewide Tasmanian planning scheme, which is meant to be more simple. It is really complex. I have struggled with this, like others have indicated that they have, because uh I don't have the expertise. Uh, in fact, none of us who sit around this table are qualified planners, and it is very, very difficult. Uh, we have tried uh to, I guess, engage in this in a way that would help us move forward. Um, and I hope that we have been able to do that today. I think certainly the discussion has been valuable in trying to ensure that points that have been raised by the community have been represented by various people who have made contributions this evening, that we're able to ensure that those messages through this amendment are heard by the TPC and that we can move this forward positively. Um, so I guess my parting uh final comment would be to make a plea to all those people who have made representations to engage with the process with the TPC at the hearings. And as we've heard, it doesn't need to be, um, you don't have to go with a consultant, that's entirely up to you if you don't want to. And we're fortunate that councillor Street, uh who in his professional capacity is a lawyer, has appeared at the TPC many times and was able to share with us this evening uh the process that uh it goes through, and I believe the TPC on their website has some information that helps people who are going to make representations to know what to expect. Um, they do try and make it as, I guess, informal as one can through those sort of processes, so that it is accessible to as many people as possible. So please, that is the plea that we make, um, to ensure that uh you can continue to have your voices heard in this process. And I guess I draw people's attention to the fact that there's a um a chart on, I think it was page six of the um uh thirty five F, which shows where we are in the draft planning scheme process, and we are only sitting sort of midway through this process at the moment. Um, you know, this is, everything in pink there is now, the ball is in the TPC's court, um in terms of that, and uh I hope that people continue to engage with that, and certainly I would hope that they hear the messages that we have provided um throughout this debate this evening. Having said that, I will, councillor Bain, you have your light on, um, and then I think councillor Antaly has indicated he would like to speak, so councillor Bain.
Thank you, may. Just a couple of quick questions. Um, in terms of the TPC letting representatives, uh we can't, letting representatives know that the hearings are going ahead, is that done via uh direct mail to each of the representatives, or how do they notify people?
Ms. Talamol.
Um, through you, may, yes, they contact um representatives directly. We provide all those contact details.
Great. And will council be doing any media to make people aware that the hearings are going ahead?
Ms. Talamol.
Um, through you, may, as representatives will be contacted directly, neither wouldn't have been media about the hearings. We certainly can do a media release generally and where we're up to, that that would be fine, um but not for the purpose of informing them because they're going to get direct invitation.
But uh are people who haven't made a representation also able to contact us to become part of it?
Ms. Talamol.
Um, through you, may, anyone who hasn't made a representation to date would need to approach the TPC about being allowed to join late.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's entirely at their discretion, whether they would allow people to do that or not.
It's, it would probably be, um, I I would say that we should, whilst obviously that process is the TPC's, it probably would be um prudent of us to, within our social media channels and in other ways, make it known to the community that if they haven't made a representation, that they still can by directly approaching the TPC. So I would feel that that's a message we should try and push out as well um to our communities. Uh, councillor Antaly.
Thank you, may. Point C, um, just get your opinion, may. Is it explicit enough to make sure that, and maybe it is because of the first sentence, but help me out here, is it explicit enough to make it clear that the main issue is people who are in the LCZ wanting to either be, to be moved, hold, uh, the mass of them to be moved to KP, KBZ or something less restrictive? Or is that captured by the fact is that we've actually discussed that, and that will be in the summary? How explicit do we have to be in in C to make sure we capture the LCZers that, for whatever reason, may not be able to move over to KBZ?
I'll take some advice from staff there who did draft these fine words. Ms. Talamol.
Nearly at fourteen hours at work, so yeah, they may not make sense.
Sorry.
The, is it explicit enough, I think, excuse me, that the summary, we should, we'll summarise that because you've said it numerous times.
Yeah.
Um, so I feel that it's in there. If you were to add it in, it should probably be in the first sentence, um, less so than the second sentence, but I I'm comfortable it will, it'll go, the letter will go to the mayor for signing anyway. Um, so certainly the mayor will have the opportunity to consider the content. Thanks, may.
Could I propose?
Love to.
Could I propose with someone's permission that we actually, in that first sentence, put in there something around, especially regarding the LCZ?
Yep, happy to do that.
Concerns or words to that effect?
A summary of the matters and issues discussed, uh, comma, particularly in relation to the landscape conservation zone, comma. Okay. Councillor Courtover, are you happy with that amendment?
Sure.
Yep, councillor Fox as a seconder has indicated, yes. Does anybody else wish to speak before I hand over to councillor Courtover as the mover to close the debate? Nope, councillor Courtover.
Thank you, may. The focus of the discussion has been on the LCZ and the proposed PPZ with some mention of the SAPs and the future urban zone. We haven't talked a lot about the other zones, uh impacts on industrial, commercial, agricultural, general residential, but we have acknowledged, I think, that this process will indeed impact all types of development within the municipality. Sensible planning changes are an opportunity to provide big-picture solutions to tackle big-picture problems. The housing crisis, adaptation to a changing climate, economic drivers for thriving commercial districts. The public hearings that we've talked about will be an important opportunity to participate, to recommend your changes and alterations. That's where you can let them know, I want to be in this zone and not that one because I want to, uh, whatever the reasons might be. Professionals working within a regulated system must adhere to higher-level guidelines and cannot simply make decisions based on individual preference or public pressure. And so that's why I understand completely why this planning authority needs to follow those guidelines that have been set by the TPC within the intent set out by the act. We can't just ignore those guidelines. Uh, there was always the option when it comes to the LCZ to just throw up our hands and say, there there will be no changes forthcoming, but instead, an alternative option was proposed, and that's this new PPZ that we've talked at length about, the Kingborough Bushland and Coastal Living Zone, to try and find a compromise and improve community satisfaction. And now we can go to those public hearings and talk about those proposals, and everybody who is involved can have their say. Once again, I thank everyone for their participation, and good night.
Good. You just sounded like a newsreader, but thank you. It's good night from me and good night from him, uh, for those old enough to remember that reference. Um, thank you very much. Okay, so I'm going to put the recommendation now. It's as printed in on the screen with the uh additional clause C that we have previously read into uh the record. It was moved by councillor Courtover and seconded by councillor Fox. All those in favour?
Against?
The motion is carried unanimously. Uh, that brings the Planning Authority of Council now adjourns at nine thirty seven PM, and you'll be absolutely delighted to know now that we move into open session of council at nine thirty seven PM. But before we do so, can I just thank everybody sincerely for um the contributions around the table tonight, uh, the productive discussions, the manner in which everybody contributed, and can I particularly thank uh our staff who have had to be thinking constantly tonight for a a long period of time after a long day at work, and I know that they've been plagued by some winter illnesses as well. So uh we really appreciate your patience with us as we work our way through that and appreciate the work that you have done on this. So thank you very much. Uh, so, open session of council, let's have a bit of enthusiasm for that. Open session recommences at nine thirty seven PM. Page four hundred and forty-three, petitions still being actioned. There are no petitions still being actioned. Page four hundred and forty-three, petitions received in the last period at the time the agenda was compiled. No At the time the agenda was compiled, no petitions had been received. We're now moving on to appendices with the recommendation on page 443. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for the appendices. I've got a mover in councillor Fox and a seconder, was that councillor Dean? And I'm delighted to say that the Director of Engineering Services has been sitting here for four hours without a single question being asked at him. And I note that there is the works report there, so I'm hoping that somebody has got a question for him to make his period sitting here worthwhile. And I can see, I can see councillor Fox, oh, here we go, councillor Bain. Councillor Fox, oh, look, they're lighting up now. Councillor Fox.
I don't have a question, but I do want to make a comment on the quality of the road that the grader is producing lately. I think a lot of people are really impressed with the graded roads around our municipality. It's just that there might be a new driver or better equipment, but it seems to be incorporating a lot of the drainage issues as well as the actual surface of the road and the quality of the gravel. So I just want to pass those compliments on from members of the public who've made those comments.
Thank you.
Mr Mackey.
Through you, ma'am. Thank you very much and I'll pass that on to my team.
Councillor Bain.
Thank you, ma'am, since you asked for a question.
No, no, it was Mr Mackey was, he mentioned it to me in the break earlier.
Just note number 12, the Turner Highway snug footpath and the Old Station Road, Davies Road shared path, a couple that have been on the agenda for a while, which I'm sure snug residents are very happy about. Am I correct in saying that one of those paths, the connection between Davies Road and Old Station Road, was originally going to be just a gravel path, but that's now been upgraded to a concrete path?
Mr Mackey.
Yes, through you, ma'am, that is correct. It was a gravel path, but we found some savings and we've moved it now into a concrete path.
Excellent. And any indication of when that project's likely to commence?
The contract, through you, ma'am, the contract is currently engaged in some works in the Kingborough Foreshore region and they'll be moving on to that project once they complete that.
Excellent.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr Mackey? Any questions for Mr Spiggs, who's been waiting? Any questions for Mr Spiggs? Councillor Fox, thank you.
I just had a quick question on the Kingston Beach Foreshore, which is coming up really well. And I'm wondering if we could be provided with an illustration of how much of the project is going to be done now and how much is going to be learned later, so we get a feeling of where we're at? Because it's sort of stop, start, stop, start along the way. And it would be nice to know if it's going to be continuous in a short time or if we're going to have to put up with it sort of half-done.
So I had a briefing on this recently and then we did a walk around to have a look at some of the aspects of it. So there is a revised master plan. So I don't know when we've got another workshop for operational updates, but it might be appropriate to bring that to one of those and we can show you the plans. Then it'll make much more sense. Thank you. I just answered that for you, Mr Mackey, because, you know, I'm kind. Okay, all right. Any further questions? No, thank you. I'll put the recommendation then. It was moved by councillor Fox, seconded by councillor Dean. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Still on page 443, notices of motion, there are no notices of motion. And then it comes to confirmation of items to be dealt with in closed session. In accordance with Regulation 17, the local government meeting procedures, Regulations 2025, cancelled by absolute majority, moves into closed session to consider the following items, confirmation of minutes and applications for leave of absence. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. I've got a mover in councillor Fox and a seconder in councillor Bain. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. In accordance with the Kingborough Council Meetings Audio Recordings Guidelines Policy, recording of the open session of the meeting will now cease. Open session of council adjourned at 9:43pm. Thank you very much to the last remaining two members of the public gallery who have been with us this evening. Well done. Congratulations, you get a gold star. Thank you for being with us. Thank you to everyone who's been watching along at home because the open session of council...